Very handsome. Uh. Sure. Sure. Yeah. Okay. I was like. It's. Everybody guns. Okay. Ready, hi man?
Yeah. Yeah. Oh. Okay. I was like. It's. Everybody guns. Okay. Ready, hi man? Yeah. Yeah. I spent a lot of time watching the kids on the driveway.
Okay. Calling to order the. County. Committee of the whole meeting for Tuesday, August 8th, happy 2023. It is 7:21. Ramina, can you just have a roll call?
Mr. Heineman. Ms. Newman.
Here.
Mr. Neder.
Here.
Ms. Shapiro. Yes, please. Mr. Brazza.
Here.
Dr. Elliot Schirmer. Here. Mr. Struck.
Here. I would like everyone else at the table to please identify.
For me, I am Secret Secretary.
Tom Krieger, Assistant Superintendent, Human Resources.
Michael Locke, Assistant Superintendent, Curriculum Instruction Assessment.
Aaron Warner, Chief Communications Officer.
Tiffany Rowe, Assistant Superintendent for Student Services.
Brian Armour, Chief Operations Officer.
Ali Monti, Finance.
Debbie Finn, Principal Highland Park High School.
Catherine Anderson, Principal at Deerfield High School.
Ron Kazem, Chief Information Officer.
Mira Ante, Assistant Superintendent of Diversity, Equity and Inclusion.
First, Assistant Superintendent. First order of business is the approval of the board meeting agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as listed?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor?
Yes, please.
Aye, aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The motion carries. First, next item of business is the board reports. That's the president's report. It is hard to believe that at this time next week, approximately 3,400 teenagers will cause a disturbance in the force with the shared realization that they have school the next morning. I have every confidence that students will be welcomed into our schools by every staff member, from part-time custodians, teaching professionals, building leaders and administrators, with the common goal of fulfilling the mission of this district to cultivate the passion, unlock the potential, and to inspire the unique excellence of each and every student. As a board, we do our part by insisting that every decision that we make and every action that we approve affirmatively furthers this school district's mission to inspire, engage, and cultivate the unique needs and talents of each and every student. To this end, I wanted to mention several important items. First, as the school year approaches its start, the board and the District Educators Association have been diligently working on the party's first collective bargaining agreements and have reached tentative agreements on salary and benefits. The parties are continuing negotiations regarding committees, teacher evaluations, and special education working conditions. We will provide a full report on the agreement when it is finalized. The next negotiation is scheduled for Monday, August 28th. Until a final agreement is ratified, the 2019-2023 agreement with the DEA will remain in effect, including salary and fringe benefits. Non-affiliated employees will also continue to be paid and to receive fringe benefits under the terms of their employment from last year. It is typical that in years of teacher contract negotiations, corresponding pay adjustments are made across employee groups, and we expect that to be the case this year. Secondly, a reminder for all parents and guardians that school fees, eBooks, supplies, course packets, activity tickets, yearbooks, and the like are now available to purchase on the parent portal on Infinite Campus. If anyone feels that they may need financial assistance such as free and reduced books or meals, please visit the financial aid site on the school webpages. Finally, on this evening's agenda, we have several action items concerning school safety. We are excited to welcome. Welcome to District 113's staff, a new Director of Security. All of the professional guidance recommends that a school district have a Director of Security as a point person to concentrate on ongoing processes and continuous assessments and improvements in student safety. We also will be voting on the recommendations contained in District 113's School Safety Plan. The School Safety Plan and accompanying recommendations are the result of an intensive and ongoing process of investigation, consideration, discussion, and assessment of the available factual and technical information. The District Safety Plan endeavors to establish multiple layers of mitigation for the risks that schools face. District 113 is committed to continuing to learn from its experience and to evaluating the impact of its safety measures, and will continue to enhance and tweak its safety operations. As the board has reiterated numerous times, we are committed to getting school safety right, not doing it fast. There is no such thing as a perfect flawless system. Safety does not exist in isolation. It is but one component to the complex system that is a high school. Fire safety, the emotional and social condition of students, the importance of having places for students to collaborate, to meet and to encounter each other, the environment for learning and creativity within the building, and the cultivation of respect for others in our diverse and pluralistic student body. All will continue to be priorities in the board's discussions. The board continues to be committed to acting based upon the best available information and for the greatest shared good. Despite any disagreements we may have, we owe it to our students to model working together in a calm and reasonable manner. And that ends the president's report for this evening. We'll go next to Administration Information Reports. Bruce?
Thank you, Mr. Struck. As Dan said, we're about to start school a week from tomorrow, and it's such a great time of year. Anyone who works in schools loves this time of year. Students coming back, they're such an excitement. And I know we have reports from the principals on back to school, so not wanting to get in the way of that in any way, but very excited about the start of school this year. Just point of reference, since 2019, well, I'm not going to say what I was, you know, I was going to say. I'm just not going to say how excited we are to start this school year unlike what we were dealing with in 2020, 21, or 2022. Yeah, I'm not, well, I'm not saying it. So I think we should be good. But we are very, very excited about start of school. A couple of things under my report. We're going to say this a few times. I just want to say it here. I'll say it again. Well, as I said, we're going to say it a few times. We're going to have a test of our emergency communications at 9:55 a.m. on Monday, August 14th. This is really important because it's our way of being able to communicate to people in the event of an emergency. And we need to test it. Because if people don't get it, we need to tell them, okay, here's what you need to do to get it in if you want, if you want to receive these communications. It could be something as traditional as canceling school personnel or e-learning day or something, something along those lines. But it's important that we test the system, and it's also important that we, people know that we are using the information you give us. So if you think you're getting emergency communications, you don't. We need to help you figure that out so that you can receive those. But it's coming 9:55 a.m., Monday, August 14th. It'll, we'll be saying this a few times. Another thing I wanted to mention, since we're at the start of school, there's this new law called Bates Law that went into effect on July 1. We worked to make sure everything was in place to comply with the laws of July 1. There is a, on our webpage, there's a link to what's called the Transparency Portal. It is a very easy way to access a lot of information about District 113 from one place. I actually use it all the time when I'm looking for something. It's usually the first place I go because almost always I can get to what I need quickly through that. And there are a lot of resources about Bates Law, a resource guide for parents, students, and educators that is the Illinois State Board of Education created that's on the Transparency Portal. It's really, really important. People take a look. I want to let the board know that we have a newsletter going to the community. It doesn't look like this, but this is how it prints. If you're, you know, we have eight and a half by 11 printing, doesn't quite look like this. And as of 10 o'clock this morning, the printer told us it would drop at the post office either tomorrow or Thursday. This is.
Ready, hi Mike? I spent a lot of time watching the kids on the driveway.
Calling to order the township fiscal committee of the whole meeting for Tuesday, August 8th, February twenty twenty three. It is seven twenty one. Ramona, can you just have a roll call?
Mr. Heineman. Ms. Newman.
Here.
Mr. Neder.
Here.
Ms. Shapiro. Yes, please. Mr. Brazza.
Here.
Dr. Elliot Schirmer here. Mr. Struck.
Here. I would like everyone else at the table to please identify.
Ramina, Secretary.
Tom Krieger, Assistant Superintendent, Human Resources.
Michael Locke, Assistant Superintendent, Curriculum Instruction Assessment.
Aaron Warner, Chief Communications Officer.
Tiffany Rowe, Assistant Superintendent for Student Services.
Brian Armour, Chief Operations Officer.
Ali Monti, Finance.
Debbie Finn, Principal Highland Park High School.
Catherine Anderson, Principal at Deerfield High School.
Ron Kazm, Chief Information Officer.
Mira Ante, Assistant Superintendent of Diversity, Equity and Inclusion.
First, Assistant. First order of business is the approval of the board meeting agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as listed?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion. All those in favor?
Yes, please.
Aye, aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The motion carries. First, next item of business is the board reports. That's the president's report. It is hard to believe that at this time next week, approximately thirty four hundred teenagers will cause a disturbance in the force with the shared realization that they have school the next morning. I have every confidence that students will be welcomed into our schools by every staff member, from part-time custodians, teaching professionals, building leaders and administrators, with the common goal of fulfilling the mission of this district to cultivate the passion, unlock the potential, and to inspire the unique excellence of each and every student. As a board, we do our part by insisting that every decision that we make and every action that we approve affirmatively furthers this school district's mission to inspire, engage, and cultivate the unique needs and talents of each and every student. To this end, I wanted to mention several important items. First, as the school year approaches its start, the board and the district educators association have been diligently working on the party's first collective bargaining agreements and have reached tentative agreements on salary and benefits. The parties are continuing negotiations regarding committees, teacher evaluations, and special education working conditions. We will provide a full report on the agreement when it is finalized. The next negotiation is scheduled for Monday, August twenty eighth. Until a final agreement is ratified, the twenty nineteen twenty twenty three agreement with the DEA will remain in effect, including salary and fringe benefits. Non-affiliated employees will also continue to be paid and to receive fringe benefits under the terms of their employment from last year. It is typical that in years of teacher contract negotiations, corresponding pay adjustments are made across employee groups, and we expect that to be the case this year. Secondly, a reminder for all parents and guardians that school fees, eBooks, supplies, course packets, activity tickets, yearbooks, and the like are now available to purchase on the parent portal on Infinite Campus. If anyone feels that they may need financial assistance such as free and reduced books or meals, please visit the financial aid site on the school webpages. Finally, on this evening's agenda, we have several action items concerning school safety. We are excited to welcome Welcome to District One Thirteen's staff, a new Director of Security. All of the professional guidance recommends that a school district have a Director of Security as a point person to concentrate on ongoing processes and continuous assessments and improvements in student safety. We also will be voting on the recommendations contained in District One Thirteen's school safety plan. The school safety plan and accompanying recommendations are the result of an intensive and ongoing process of investigation, consideration, discussion, and assessment of the available factual and technical information. The district's safety plan endeavors to establish multiple layers of mitigation for the risks that schools face. District One Thirteen is committed to continuing to learn from its experience and to evaluating the impact of its safety measures, and will continue to enhance and tweak its safety operations. As the board has reiterated numerous times, we are committed to getting school safety right, not doing it fast. There is no such thing as a perfect flawless system. Safety does not exist in isolation. It is but one component of the complex system that is a high school. Fire safety, the emotional and social condition of students, the importance of having places for students to collaborate, to meet and to encounter each other, the environment for learning and creativity within the building, and the cultivation of respect for others in our diverse and pluralistic student body. All will continue to be priorities in the board's discussions. The board continues to be committed to acting based upon the best available information and for the greatest shared good. Despite any disagreements we may have, we owe it to our students to model working together in a calm and reasonable manner. And that ends the president's report for this evening. We'll go next to administration information reports. Bruce?
Thank you, Mr. Struck. As Dan said, we're about to start school a week from tomorrow, and it's such a great time of year. Anyone who works in schools loves this time of year. Students coming back, they're such an excitement. And I know we have reports from the principals on back to school, so not wanting to get in the way of that in any way, but very excited about the start of school this year. Just point of reference, since twenty nineteen, well, I'm not going to say what I was going to say. I'm just not going to say how excited we are to start this school year unlike what we were dealing with in twenty 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 one or twenty twenty two. Yeah, I'm not saying it. So I think we should be good. But we are very, very excited about starting school. A couple of things under my report. We're going to say this a few times. I just want to say it here. I'll say it again. As I said, we're going to say it a few times. We're going to have a test of our emergency communications at nine fifty five a.m. on Monday, August fourteenth. This is really important because it's our way of being able to communicate to people in the event of an emergency. And we need to test it. Because if people don't get it, we need to tell them, okay, here's what you need to do to get it. And if you want to receive these communications, it could be something as traditional as canceling school personnel or e-learning day or something along those lines. But it's important that we test the system, and it's also important that we, people know that we are using the information you give us. So if you think you're getting emergency communications, you don't. We need to help you figure that out so that you can receive those. But it's coming nine fifty five a.m., Monday, August fourteenth. It'll, we'll be saying this a few times. Another thing I want to mention as we're at the start of school, there's this new law called Bates Law that went into effect on July one. We worked to make sure everything was in place to comply with the laws of July one. There's a, on our webpage, there's a link to what's called the Transparency Portal. It is a very easy way to access a lot of information about District One Thirteen from one place. I actually use it all the time. When I'm looking for something, it's usually the first place I go because almost always I can get to what I need quickly through that. And there are a lot of resources about Bates Law Resource Guide for Parents, Students, and Educators that is the Illinois State Board of Education created. That's on the Transparency Portal. It's really, really important. People take a look. I want to let the board know that we have a newsletter going to the community. It doesn't look like this, but this is how it prints. You know, we have eight and a half by eleven printing. It doesn't quite look like this. And as of ten o'clock this morning, the printer told us it would drop at the post office either tomorrow or Thursday. This is the best way to communicate to every taxpayer in District One Thirteen. Not everyone's on our email list. The only way they hear about District One Thirteen is if we're communicating directly to them. And so this is an opportunity to talk about the great schools we have and all the amazing accomplishments of our students and staff. So that should be, that should be coming soon. Last thing, in the event that someone is wondering, as everyone knows, Twitter has now become X.
I don't like it.
And you, but you know, there's usually a media file that we would download. You know, when you see at the bottom of an email, they got those symbols that have that little lowercase stuff for Facebook, and it used to be the little bird for Twitter. We're still using the Twitter bird because we don't have that file yet that would allow us to put that X. I don't think they've created it yet. Soon as they do, we'll have it in case you're wondering. Also, in case you're wondering, Threads doesn't have an API we can download. So we're in the same situation with Threads, but we have claimed our names. So if that becomes a thing, then we're ready to put things out on social media on Threads. And that's, that is it for me.
Bruce, can I just ask one question on the Monday's emergency testing system? That is just for our district families, employees, et cetera. That is not a community-wide? What is that? Correct. Okay, I just wanted to make sure that there's a distinction between.
Well, one distinction I will make is if you have our mobile app and you have notifications downloaded, anyone who has the push notifications enabled would receive a push notification.
So a community member who has our app would also be able to get those things if they chose to do.
Right, just to push. We're not going to text or email them. This is strictly for those.
We will test that as well.
Yes, thank you.
Because that's the beginning of the year. We need to. Yes, thank you for that clarification.
And the next stop, beginning of the school year of twenty twenty three twenty four. Is that our principals?
So there may be some duplication. So I just saved you maybe a minute or two. Okay. I'll start with saying that we actually had a great PD today. So shout out to Mike Glock for bringing that. We did a fierce conversations as a district and as administrator academy, and it was actually a great day. So thanks for that. We started back yesterday. AC and BAM came back together. It was a great day from my perspective. Much like Bruce said, this has been a very different summer. It's been three years of really non-traditional tough summers, and so this is just a refreshing, great start. Spent a lot of time kind of bringing our team back together, reestablishing our group, welcoming newest members. We also are bringing back again this year something we had last year in response to Fourth of July called Giant Unite Evenings. Our first one was last week. That was specifically for tenth, eleventh, and twelfth graders. We combined a yearbook pickup with food, palitas, which is like a frozen Mexican popsicle, DJ. So kids came, they could sit down, sign that yearbooks, get to know our new activities director who is not shy, and will definitely talk to every child that walks in the building. So that was great. Our second one is Thursday night only for our freshmen, so we're looking forward to hosting that. Staff and students are invited to those events. Link Crew training starts for us tomorrow, so some of our upperclassmen who are terrific leaders who are going to take our freshman class under their arms and carry them through a great year. We will be doing that training tomorrow. Looking forward to that. Our administrative, as I said, our staff came back together. One of our focuses of AC and also what will be for our staff is kind of this idea of our B Giant theme and our House on Vine and what everyone's role is and to make our House on Vine a place that everyone feels safe, included, and belongs. So we're looking forward to that. The rest of AC this week, we are really going to work on preparing for our staff and students to come back next week. Next week, Monday, we will have an all-staff meeting in the afternoon. We will celebrate milestones. We will reunite with colleagues, and it's usually a really nice way to start the year. The next day, our freshmen come only. They will start in Link Crews, and then they will do a modified schedule so they get to meet all their teachers and, of course, and with ice cream. That's how we do that every year. And then the first three days of school, we have a special schedule. We will start Thursday and Friday, excuse me, Wednesday and Thursday, we will start with homeroom again in an approach, in an attempt to build community in our schools and help kids feel a place where they feel safe and a place adult or two who they feel like they can really trust early in the building. And then on Friday, we will be holding an assembly for our students, again, to kind of bring out the themes of B Giant and our House on Vine. So that's kind of our theme for the year. There are balloon arches, there is DJs during lunch, and there's an IG background photo opportunity. Does everyone know what that is? Because I did not, but now I do. So we're excited. Lot of enthusiasm at Highland Park right now. Oh, one last thing. All information can be found on the Highland Park High School website. I want to say that because I'm getting a lot of emails. I know things are on Facebook that may not be true, so please, please, please.
You have to go to X.
They're trying. They're trying. It's not always accurate. So please, I've said to a lot of parents today, please go to our website. Everything's there. There's a tab that says back to school. Everything is there, and if not, please reach out to our counselor. We will help you with that information.
That's fantastic. Thank you. Let's see here. Just in addition to administrative team coming back, we have our administrative assistants and our counselors who have come back because, as especially the parents know, our schedules were released today, so our counselors have been busy with that. Now that they have their schedules, students can come to the building to walk their schedules. Our freshmen will have a special opportunity to do so on Monday. We have our Warrior Welcome, which is our freshman orientation, so we have students and parents come at night. We have separate sessions for students and parents. I talked to the parents. George Grubb talks about cones and how you drive to drop off your students. It's a big hit. Yes, exactly. Yes, yeah. He missed that during COVID, so this is like a joyous moment for him. Yeah, exactly. He's here somewhere. His ears are burning. And we also have our students who are meeting for the first time in their freshman advisory, so they're meeting their freshman advisory teacher. They're meeting their senior advisors. So it should be a great event, and we're changing things up a little bit this year. We are, after those sessions, we're going to have a party with our parents and our students where student council is going to have a DJ and some treats. We'll have our parent organizations there, so hopefully it's an opportunity for everyone to connect with each other before the school year starts, and it should be a nice time.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, please.
Is that only freshmen or is it freshmen and new families?
It is just freshmen. We have a transfer orientation actually this Friday.
Okay, thank you.
And there are several. We also connect our transfer students with peers, so they have their kind of own version of Warrior Welcome that they attend at the school on Friday. We, as Debbie indicated, we have our staff arriving on Monday, and our all-staff meeting is on Tuesday. Like Debbie, we also have a special schedule for Deerfield where we will have actually all of our classes meeting on Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. And just like last year, our theme really is community building, relationship building. We'll have a DJ. We have treats, so it will be hopefully just a really happy experience as our students come in. Like Debbie, we also have a theme. Our theme this year is care, connect, community. Those are all intertwined, and we're really hoping that the care piece is talking about how we care for ourselves, we care for others, and we care for our school. And we care for our school by picking up after ourselves at the lunch table. We also care for our school by attending school on time. So there are some pieces that we are really hoping to emphasize. I think that have been some things that we have seen since COVID where we just need to provide our students with more of the tools and skills to make sure that they have a great experience at the school and that they can connect with others and build community. So they're really, again, intertwined and hopefully a good way for us to start this school year. I think we both want to give a really big shout out to our custodial staff and our maintenance crew who have been working tirelessly all throughout the summer and into these, you know, last few days before everybody enters a building. They have been dealing with a lot of construction that's been happening, and we'll talk about that next. But they are, you know, when we have been able to be in the building, sometimes we have not been able to be in the building because of some construction that's happening, but they're always there. And I think it's important that we just recognize that there are people within our buildings who are not leaving, that they're there all summer, and they really make our buildings run literally, and we're so grateful for everything that they do every single day, but especially as we start the beginning of the school year. So we can jump into construction update for both of the schools. I will start first for Deerfield. I'll start with probably the happiest thing for me. All of it's very important, but we do have a new auditorium that's being built. So we're very excited by the progress that is occurring for that. Anybody that has been in Deerfield High School before will notice a slight difference as they walk into the building. There is a new entrance to the auditorium, so it juts out a little bit into the hallway. So that will be a difference that students will see as they enter the building as well as staff. But luckily, some of the construction that we had in place over the summer, it's not going to impact the Circle Drive or anything at the front of the building, so they'll be able to do all that internal work, and that is scheduled to be completed around Halloween. So hopefully, we will be able to start some performances in November, but until then, we will be using Highland Park High School's auditorium for some of our fall performances. We have had also an update to our fire alarm devices. We are one hundred percent fire protection with new sprinklers that have been installed. We have eight air handling units that have been replaced. We have also, we also have boiler replacements. I mean, not as thrilling as auditorium, but they are making our buildings run. Over to you, Debbie.
In the winter, it is.
Yes, a hundred percent.
It's really hard to follow an auditorium because my stuff's really much in the boiler category, but it's important, and thank you to Brian, and I'm really glad you mentioned maintenance and security because they have been keeping us running this summer, and they're terrific. Our bus parking lot has been paved. It looks lovely and has been replaced. We have three air handling units. Two of the three air handlers have been installed. The last one is being installed this week. The science roofing and the science wing has been replaced, and our chillers this winter, the main building chillers will be replaced during the winter when cooling is not needed. So exciting stuff over by us, too. Thank you.
Thank you so much. It's exciting to see all the intention and thought that's going into the start of the school year, and it's wonderful, and it's great to be reminded of how it is a team effort. I mean, everybody, the district contributes in their own way.
I was remiss to mention a very important part of what is happening this week as well, because I know I will hear if I don't say anything. I'm so sorry. It was like the first on my list, and we had athletics and marching bands start this week. So, you know, during the summer, we'll have lots of different camps that are going on, but I feel like we're in full force now. To have students that we're seeing all throughout the day in and out of the building is one of the greatest things. So kudos to our directors and our coaches and all of our student athletes and our band members. We're very excited to have our campus buzzing again.
Thanks. The high school is a village. Next up is our FOIA requests. Bruce?
This is the list of FOIAs that have been received and processed since the last board meeting.
Any questions? And moving right along, then, we go on to our discussion item for the evening. The twenty twenty three twenty four school year safety plan and recommendations.
Thank you.
And I assume you'll be kicking that off, Chris?
Yep. Yes. So before we get into this, just one thing, I want to just pause for a moment. It was so great to hear all the things that are happening in school, and as Kathy said, once you get the band and athletics going, it really starts to feel like school. But I just want to pause and just make sure we know that that, so close to the start of school, a presentation like this should never be felt as normal or viewed as normal. It's just, it's very unfortunate that it is part of the reality we live in, that we have to have this conversation before school starts because it's part of the world we live in. But I didn't, just want to just launch into it as if this presentation is just as normal as what the principals described. What they're describing, that's normal school. This is something that I don't ever want, I don't think we should ever view as normal. It's unfortunately just necessary. So. Okay, so with that in mind, presentation I actually falls into two parts. It's what we're currently doing and then what we're also recommending for this school year. We're going to organize both those parts around the layers of mitigation that we have in order to keep our students and staff safe from the risk of gun violence. So that's really what we're talking about. But gun violence is not the only risk we face. Ron, if you go to the next slide, please. So we thought it was worth, you know, locating all, you know, gun violence and all the risks that we're facing. Actually, not all the risks. This isn't meant to be a comprehensive list. What this is trying to show is there are a lot of risks that we have to manage in school. Gun violence is one of them. Severe weather, train derailments, natural disasters, all these things that we have to live with because we live in an imperfect world, we face a lot of risk. We've got plans in place to address each of those. But by the way, I think there's one missing. I heard on the news today that the natural disaster that causes more deaths in the U.S. than any other is heat. So we probably should have heat up there. But even though he's not up there, it is the case. You know, we also have plans in place for that, but we're not talking about any of those risks. When we talk about a safety plan, I just want to make sure one knows that we face a variety of risks. We've got plans in place for all of them. In some cases, you know, we actually practice in event there is we face one of these risks like fire, for example, we practice this. But it's not the case that we, you know, practice for all of them, but these are the risks. All right, next slide, please, Ron. The one we are going to talk about tonight is gun violence. You know, it's interesting, I just mentioned the risk of fire. Our Lady of the Angels fire happened in nineteen fifty eight in Humboldt Park. In that fire, ninety-two students and three nuns died, and it was shocking to the conscience, not just in Illinois, but in the United States. And as a result of that fire, there were changes that were demanded in school design and in fire safety codes. I heard recently that last year, I'm not, I'm not tracked this down, so I'm not sure, you know, the number should be verified if that's important, but the point, I think, obtained six hundred fires in schools last year. It's not like it doesn't happen. It does. Six hundred fires in schools last year. Not one student or teacher died in any of those fires. So there's something to be said about having a standard that schools can go by when it comes to gun safety as a risk. Gun violence is a risk, sorry. But we don't. So just keeping this in mind as we're going through this. If we were going to build a new school building, if we were going to build a new addition onto a school, it'd be very clear what designs we have to implement in order to ensure fire safety. It'd be very clear what the codes are that we have to meet in order for that building to pass inspection. We have clear standards to protect students and staff from fire. Next slide, please. When it comes to the gun violence safety risks, there are no standards. So this is going to be part of the backdrop of this. So when we think about the risk of gun violence in schools, we think about this in three ways. First is the armed intruder. You know, we all know examples of these. I don't know that we need to get into them so much. The other is the weapon outside of a school parking lot in the front of the school. And we know this because there have been enough of these things that statistically we know that is where our greatest risk is. You know, it's interesting that there was this amendment called the Dickey Amendment in nineteen ninety-six, and it actually prevented the federal government from studying gun violence. And it was not repealed until twenty eighteen. So now the federal government is now legally allowed to study gun violence. Other people do because they happen so much. So we know that a weapon outside of school, either in the parking lot or somewhere on, you know, like in front of the school, statistically, that's where we're facing risks. The third risk that we face is someone bringing a concealed weapon in school. So when it comes to this, the question becomes, how are we going to, what are we doing in order to protect students and staff from all of these risks? Next slide, please. We've got plenty of guidance. This is coming from the United States Secret Service National Threat Assessment Center. You know, I'm not going to read all these. These slides have a lot of words on them. You know, I'm not, I'm not going to read all these. These slides have a lot of words on them. Obviously not going to to read them. Talk about a couple of points maybe on on each slide. The board members have questions or comments, please just interrupt, you know, right then. But if you're looking, you know, to compare what we're doing to what experts advise, this is, this is one of the things that we do. And if you look at what experts are advising that we do, this is what we're seeing. And as we go through this, you'll see that we are, we we do these things. Next slide, please. All right. So this this slide, what we're trying to do in this slide is we are trying to show our layers of mitigation. And we work really hard on this image. We are really trying to make this image do a lot for us because it was, it's really important to try to represent in some visual form what this is. It's 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 really difficult. So I I think we just let's not ask this image to do too much. One of the things that we're are trying to emphasize with this image though, is culture and climate is in the middle. That is, you is we'll go through this. It is the most important thing we do. That's why it's in the middle. Not the only thing we do. If it were, if it were sufficient to protect students and staff from gun violence, that's all we would do, but we know it's not sufficient. So we have layers. Preparedness is another layer. We want to talk about what we call access control. By that, we mean the people who are in the school are supposed to be in the school and we have ways of ensuring that. And and do we have all the adequate ways of ensuring that? And finally, crisis response, just as we have this in in place, if there were other safety risks we we were facing, whether it's tornado or fire, we have crisis response plans in place in the effect, in the event that we have this this type of of risk in our schools. A thing I want to mention before we go too much further into this. It's a common phrase in in English. There are a couple of phrases in English actually that are interesting. One is we talk about risk management. That's a common phrase, not just when it comes to this, but in other things, other areas as well. There, I've never really heard anyone say risk elimination. That's not a thing. You have to try to manage the risk that you're facing, whether it's fire, tornadoes, whatever it is, threats from gun violence, you have to try to manage them. There is no way to assure that we can eliminate risk. It's not possible. We would love to do that. No, there is no school that can do that. I remember responding to a parent after the mass shooting in Highland Park and was trying to explain, we do everything we can. There is, it's just not possible for us to guarantee safety from gun violence in schools. And the parent was extremely upset with me. And I'm thinking anyone who's making that promise is either delusional or lying because it's just not, it's just not possible. What, but what we do need to do is we need to be looking at all the risks that we're facing and assess whether the mitigations we have against those risks are adequate. So that that is, that is a fair statement. The other statement that's that's interesting is I keep having to resort to this phraseology. This protecting students from staffing, students and staff from gun violence. When we say fire safety, everybody knows what that is. If we say gun safety, that means something different. Now, gun safety refers to the people who have guns and the way that they're handling them. We don't say, when we say fire safety, we don't mean the people who are handling fire, make sure they're doing it safely. It it doesn't, we don't even have a really a phrase for this in English. It's really interesting. But so we're going to result to this, resort to this phrase is we can't just say one thing like we say fire safety, but it's, I think we're saying it just like this over and over because that is actually what we're trying to do. We are trying to protect students and staff from from gun violence. Okay. So culture and climate, what? What's, what are the experts say? Next slide, please, Ron. Sorry. Obviously not going to read this. The the thing that's interesting about it is in the readiness and emergency management for schools Technical Assistance Center. And they're referring to this, this document called the guide for developing high quality school emergency operations plans. And they are defining school climate as this rain, well, you can, you can see how it's that was defined. It's really, if you're listening to what Debbie and Kathy were saying when they were talking about the start of school, all the ways that they're trying to engage kids, make them feel connected, make them have the feeling that when they're at school, that adults care about them. And that they're, they have students who care about them. All of that, when we hear that, we should say that's just normal school. I believe that's what I said at the beginning. But actually, what they're also doing by promoting that cul- culture and climate, they're promoting school safety. And this is why we're talking about this first. This is why this is the thinner of what we do. Is it is the most important thing that we do. Next slide, please. Typically, when we talk about climate and culture, we have, you know, we got pictures of of students at games and activities. They're they're being kids, having a good time. And that is absolutely part of it. Well, we need to talk about that, you know, as we go through this. But we also have pictures of graduation. Because for us who work in high schools, there is nothing more exciting than graduation. It represents the culmination of all the work that students have done, all the heart and soul that our teachers have poured into their craft in order to help students have the opportunity to pursue what they want to do in life once they leave us. And this is, that's why we have these these graduation photos on here. Because as we go through this, it want to make sure that people understand that graduation is not just the greatest event of the school year. Anyone who's attended it knows it's just wonderful. It's also all the work that takes to get us there. That's also part of the culture and climate. Because for students to be successful in school in order to get to graduation, that effort, that work, that is culture and climate and it's contributing to school safety. So next slide, please, Ron. This is just a list. And you know, if there are questions about this, you know, we can obviously dive in as as deep as as the board wants to, you know, really the the discussion, a lot of discussion around the recommendations. But there may be a couple of things here that are that are surprising. MTSS, the multi-tier system of supports. This is, you know, one, something we put into place during the pandemic and what we were basically what that does, it it identifies the students who need something more than what we're just doing in every classroom. And it endeavors to give those things to those students so that they are successful in school. Academically, that makes sense. That sounds like that's in our wheelhouse. It's just, that's what schools do. But it also contributes to safety of students and staff. Because students who are successful in school, who are able to get out of school what they want, who are able to use the their experiences and what they're learning in order to further their their lives and go on. Anyone who says that success in school has nothing to do with school safety just doesn't understand school. It's as simple as that. That's why we have MTSS up there. Now, there are other things up there that you that are probably a little bit more expected support groups drop in wellness centers. You, a few months ago, we had students from Deerfield High School who raised money in order to have a wellness center at Deerfield High School. There are things that we do right now for students for culture and climate. You heard not only Debbie and Kathy say, but things that we're doing. And this is something that we've been working on for years. You know, there are a lot of things that the board has supported when it comes to building culture and climate. It is, I think, according to what everyone says who writes about school security, the most important thing. And in our experience, we would, we would agree with that. It is the most important thing that we do. We have assessments to make sure that or to try to assess out if there is something that we need to be aware of, either as individual student, groups of students. So it's not just trying to make people feel good. It's also trying to understand where they are in 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 their in their experience in school and as I said, very importantly, making them successful in the school. Okay, next slide, please. Talk about preparedness. Just some, here are some documents. There's a, at the, you know, we will post this slide deck for people to see. We've got a list of resources. These are some of the 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 documents that we have access to and that and that we use. Next slide, please. School is, school safety, protecting students from and staff from gun violence is something that we work really hard to get good at. We have help. We have people who are experts and who are made a career out of this. And here's just some of the the groups that we have worked with in the past or are currently working with this. The first one, though, this Department of Homeland Security walkthrough DHS is Department of Homeland Security in this context, not not one of our schools. Last week, happy to report to the board that Department of Homeland Security will send someone to do a walkthrough of your school and to see what you're doing and ask questions. They've got a set of questions they they work, they they work through. And they and they are, will give you feedback on how you are doing in your in your current state of preparedness. Obviously, you know, you know, there's something, there are a lot of things we're probably not going to talk about in open session because of the the nature of what we're talking about. But I I can say that all the things they had on their checklist, we were either already doing or we were in the process of recommending. And then they'll be coming in front of the board tonight, which I think is is a is a very strong statement of all the work that the schools have done at this point, led by Brian. We're about to have a someone else leading that leading that work after tonight. But this is an example of our interaction with people who are experts as we're trying to ensure that what we're doing is making students and staff safe from gun violence. So thank, just take a moment, thank Anne Newman, Facilities Committee Chair, who attended this walkthrough. Brian was there, Ron was there and Debbie. We had had time for one school and but because we've got the standard of care in both buildings, you know, it's we're very confident that Deerfield High School also has the same standard. Anyway, so these, these are the the groups that we're connected to and we're working with. Next slide, please. All right, national, and this is the National Threat Assessment Center, you know, show. And in in this, this is, you know, call your attention to in 82% of the of the plot studies, someone speaking up when they found out about concerning communications led to the detection and prevention of a of a plot to carry out a school attack. The question over and over again is what are we doing and are and could that be improved or enhanced? So next slide, please. Again, this is a list of all of of more preparedness. We have a tip line. That's something that's extremely important. Someone, people can submit anonymous tips. We have social media monitoring. We're talking about public facing pages. Obviously, we don't have the ability to see pages that are are private. Where is some online behavior reporting? This is another way of getting information. This comes from the the state of Illinois. You can, you can see all of these, all these things that that we're doing. One thing that the fourth bullet, this is going to be actually new this year. It's been done. We're just in the process of rolling it out. We've worked with our elementary districts to develop a common language to describe emergency situations. Whenever there's one of these situations in a school, you know, we see it. Like if something, not, I mean, not just one of our schools, one of our elementary schools, like other high schools, we see what they put out when they're saying, oh, there, here's a situation, this is happening. And I got to tell you, there are a lot of times I see what they're trying to describe and I have no idea what the heck it means. Well, what what does that mean? It doesn't matter if I understand it. What matters is do parents understand it? Do students understand it? Staff understand it? So we've worked really hard to come up with a common language that we'll use in all of four of our districts, 106, 109, 112, 113 to describe these emergency situations. This took, this was a year long process led by Brian and that's also part of our preparedness. We have, also want to call attention to, we have a a very robust camera system that has AI technology on it. It's it's an enhancement to what a camera can do. Also part of our preparedness. But, you know, I know there are lots of lists of things. If people have questions, if not, we'll just keep moving. Next slide, please. All right. So we have an emergency communication system. So we're having a test. Now, this is, this was going to staff, as I mentioned, or I didn't say staff, had that on the brain, but it's already had to, you know, clarify that for me. Coming this this Monday, we'll have another one calling out to parents. It's using the information that people have given us. And this is why we test it. People think, you know, it's easier to mistype your cell phone number. Who knows what what's happened? Or maybe your carrier is blocking these messages. We, you know, so we send this out. And if people aren't getting the message we're sending, we need to figure out why in event that they can get them. We have an app, threat assessment training, active threat drills. Here's where we're showing all the things that we're doing in terms of training. Right? So there's a lot of effort in that. Now, one thing that's new, it's not a recommendation because we've already done it. We have more PA speakers. What do PA speakers have to to do with safety? Well, if you're in a school and something's happening, we need to be able to communicate, not just to students who are in classrooms. But we think about it. Have you been in a cafeteria in a high school? It's loud. You've been in the in the hallways, it's loud. Gyms, all these spaces have students and staff, we have to be able to communicate to people when when we need to. We've added new PA speakers. Last thing is, this continues review and evaluation of new and developing technology. This is an ongoing thing. That's part of our preparedness. We do not say, okay, we've got this, we're good. We never say that. We've got this and at least according to Department of Homeland Security, we're doing well. But we don't stop. We continuously review what's out there and what can support what we're doing and make us even even safer. Okay, next, next slide, please. Oh, yes, yes. Yes. So Monday, when we have all staff back for the first time, there'll be QR codes that staff can can scan that will allow them to provide or tell them what to do in order to give us the proper information. It's a little more, you know, when we are trying to test as parents, I mean, when you think about it, how do you, how do you test?
My question, how do you let people know they're not getting a text?
Right. You know, we were going to say, if we send people a text to let them know we're testing whether they receive a text, it doesn't, right? So this is one of the things that we announce at at Open House. Our open houses are very well attended. I I was amazed when I came here, when our kids were little, we went to elementary open house and oh my goodness, it was so crowded. Highland Park High School in Deerfield, parents come to open house because they care about schools, they care about their kids. So this is an opportunity for us to say to parents, here's this, this test is coming, but there's, there's no perfect way to let people know. But here's how we do know. When we send a message, someone doesn't get it, then we hear. And then we can, we can track it down. Most of the time, it's because they've unsubscribed and they said, we don't want to hear from you anymore. And then when there's something that goes out, they don't get it. We can tell them, okay, if you want to hear from us, you have to add yourself back. The FCC does not allow us just to, you know, create these mass distribution lists. That's their big fines.
Can we operationally at Open House have those QR codes on our doors so parents can literally take that QR code on our doors if they hear this went on so they don't have to then as a parent? Remember that I didn't get the text. Remember to go on thing where if I'm leaving open house, there's a QR code. Yes, I need to skip, can we do that?
We also cross communicate with other platforms like the principal newsletters, for example, are very well. The stats on those are, they're opened and and read. So just to try and hit multiple places so people are aware that it went out and what to do.
Yep.
Right. So they, they may may have have an issue with their phone getting a text, but their email is working. So yeah, but that's, that's right. We try to, as as many ways as possible, make sure that the information that people have given us is right and it's going to work if we need it. Okay, this slide really is a, I I don't know, I I kind of think of this as a public service announcement because it's really important. Every, I think every time that I've been associated with something that felt like this is either a true risk or could become one. It was because a student came forward and said, I heard this, I saw this. What happened on April 4th, the the a tip we received, the anonymous tip, that helped because we were able to alert the police and the police were there, but we really couldn't take action on it because I mean, if you say, you know, we we think there's someone in in the school with a gun, well, that narrows it down. That didn't, it didn't help us in in trying to resolve the situation. What did resolve the situation is when students came forward and said, I saw this. And then we were able to, you know, spring into action and resolve the situation. So it is extremely important and we say this all the time and we have to say it again, that if if students see something, hear something that makes them nervous, they gotta, they gotta let someone know. Let a trusted adult know. We've got, they can submit a tip on the phone. They can, you know, we've got an email, online phone. We've got a a mobile app. There are all kinds of ways. Sunday night, we were, my wife and I were making dinner and my, on my watch, I saw that we got a tip. And not just me, but people get it, principals get it, Karen gets it, Brian. I mean, there are a lot of people, when someone submits a tip, we're looking at it. Now, in this case, it was, it was not an emergency, wasn't any kind of risk. But on Sunday night, this this happened. But on Sunday night, this, this happened. And and so we've got a lot of ways for people to let us know if they're concerned about something. And if it's at three AM, we'll see it when we get up. We're not, obviously not monitoring this all night long. But seven o'clock PM on Sunday, oh, yeah, a lot of people saw that. And if it was something that needed a response, we would be able to respond.
So question on, question on this one. So this is mechanism, if I'm understanding correctly, for students, are there mechanisms for staff, for parents, et cetera? Is that covered as well?
Yeah, anyone can, anyone can submit a tip to the tip line.
As part of what we're doing, connected to this, the ability for students to to say something, ensuring or helping find ways to make sure that all students are comfortable, have an avenue for that, feel comfortable speaking up, because in some cases they may not.
Yeah, so there are times we get tips that are not specific enough for us to follow up in the way we would, we would like. And so I think there's this comfort level. There are other times that we get tips that do have enough specificity that we can, we can follow up. It was a decision that we made to say someone can submit an anonymous tip, because we thought it might be more important to have the information, even if we don't know who sent it, than for someone to say, all right, well, I guess I can, you know, submit it as Fred Flintstone or whatever, and, but you know what I mean? So we want to make sure it's as easy as possible. But this is, you know, one of the things that I have a lot of confidence in, because I've seen it happen so many times. We have, even though we can't see private social media pages, students are on them. And with students have, in my experience, have been really, really good at letting us know, in part, I think because, you know, since they've been in school, this has been part of their world. And they, they have come up with active shooter drills and all these other drills, and they know the importance of of saying something if they see or hear something. So, but to your point, we always have to make sure that we're encouraging students to go to a trusted adult. This, this is also an extremely important point, by the way, Greg, did you make, when, on April fourth, when the students were reporting what they saw, they went to a dean. Because our, I remember when I first started teaching, the dean stood up and said, I'm the last person you want to see. You don't want to see me. And I thought, what an idiot. Our deans are not like that at all. Our deans make relationships with kids. Our deans are in the hallway, they know kids, they know their friend group, and it was, it was such that the students felt comfortable going to the dean to say, this is what I've seen. When Debbie and Kathy are talking about all the, all the activities they do to try to form these relationships with students, yes, students are going to be more successful academically, for sure, if they're connected to adults. But when it really matters, having that connection with an adult is everything. And we, and we understand that we work really, really hard to develop those, those relationships.
On that, two things. Do we share the person, if law enforcement or someone else does not need to know, do we readily share the person who submits the tip? Or do we wait until it is requested by others?
Assuming we know who the name of the person is.
A student submits a tip.
We know the name of the student.
And we, and they don't submit it after they speak to our school, and we take act, you know, and we do what we need to do.
So.
How?
The answer is, it depends.
Okay.
If it's, if there's.
But we don't openly provide it.
No.
That was my, that's why, that was my question. It has to be requested. We don't.
Well, or it's something that we need to report to law enforcement.
Okay.
And even then, there are, there are rules about how law enforcement engages with students. And and obviously, schools work in a kind of a different space than law enforcement. So it becomes, you know, yeah, it's, it's, it's a situation that's be very, very well managed, because students have rights, parents have rights. Yeah. But if if law enforcement needs to be involved, then law enforcement is involved to the extent they need to be. There, there are times in law enforcement when they're in a building, they're running it, they're, they're running it. They, they are in control. But there are other times when law enforcement is, is, you know, has to be there, because there's a situation that requires, requires.
Yeah. And then the other thing I thought was a really good point that you said, unfortunately, our students have never gone to school when this wasn't a part of their lives. And I, there was a very interesting that came out after the January sixth insurrection that the people who are telling most of our older senators, congressmen, et cetera, what to do were the young people in the room, because they grew up their whole lives with this. They were the ones that said, I mean, they will, you silence your phone, you bear, and I think that, as sad as that is, it is, I think for us who didn't grow up, it's much more disturbing than it is for them. I think it's no different than, which I laugh, looking back now, that I was supposed to go under a desk to block, to save me from a tornado. But I think for them, it's the same. It is just a part of, unfortunately, their lives.
Yeah, and we don't have tests for, you know, and one of our risks, we didn't say was a nuclear war, but, you know, this is before my time, but they used to tell the kids to get under the desk, which is like, get under this piece of kinsling. And then there's a fire.
Yeah.
From the thermonuclear blast. No, go ahead.
Why is it important for a student, you know, let's say it's twelve o'clock at night or about three o'clock in the morning, why is it important for them to make sure they submit that then versus wait, because, oh, no one's gonna read it, like, I might as well just wait till the morning. Why is it important that when they are made aware of something, that they submit it right away or communicate it right away?
Because I don't know what other, what time other people get up, but it's, it's pretty early. And the, the earlier we see the the information, the more time we have to respond to it.
Right.
And so.
It was a loaded question.
No, I understand that, but I appreciate it, because if they say, well, you know, let's see. You know, they're, they're, they're old, so they get up early, so we can send it at six. No, just send it.
Yeah.
So we, we have as much time as, and, you know, this is, this has actually happened. There have been times we've gotten information that we needed to be able to respond to. And, you know, we didn't, having as much time as possible was, was important. For example, if we need law enforcement to go to someone's house before the student leaves to come to school, let's just put it out there. If we, we need time for that. If that information comes to us in five minutes before school starts, we got another, we have a different situation. One thing I wanted to mention about this is that the improving school safety. Right? This is where this comes from. We're just not making this up. There are a lot, this, this is part of schools being prepared, and we, we've got all these tools in place.
I think it's worth tying this slide to the data and the research that actually earlier in the presentation, when you had the oh, analysis, recommendations from the Secret Service National Threat Assessment Center, they found that when with forwarded, or actually, they use averted, school attacks, eighty-two percent of the time, the reason it's averted is because of this.
That's right.
I mean, this is the number one barrier to a threat, a threat happening.
Yep.
At least according to the Secret Services research.
Nice reports as a safe thing, that it's the the number one way to stop.
That's right.
Is students. And, and it's students because they feel as if they have a home in their building. They have, and they have people they can talk to, adults they have talked to.
Next slide, please. I know this is a lot, but there's a lot behind the work we do. Threat assessment, this is an extremely important part of our work, as, as the Secret Service says, as critical students, our assessments be multidisciplinary, focused on providing robust intervention to students assessed as posing any level of risk to themselves or others. So this is, this is what, what we are advised to do. So next slide, please. And, yes, okay, sorry. All right. Can't even see this. So this is, the slide is, is talking, exhibiting, the attackers are considered, exhibit concerning behaviors. And this, so when we're talking about threat assessment, what we, what we are looking at as these concerning behaviors. Principals can speak much, much more in detail about their assessment. We do these things a lot. It's not just students, you know, who might injure others, it's students who could injure themselves. There are a lot of indicators that we have that we would say this is a concerning behavior, and it results in a, in a threat assessment. But that, that last sentence, eighty percent of the cases, attackers' behavior elicited concern from bystanders. Now, it's easy when something happens for someone to go back and say, oh, yeah, 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 I saw that. Okay, it's very different, though, to, to be able to observe specific behaviors that could result in a threat assessment. And there are times when, when students give us information, teachers give us information that that results in jet assessments.
Next slide. Oh, actually, just one comment on this, again, trying to connect the dots. The best way to do threat assess, I mean, the, the best way to gather the information for threat assessment strikes me is actually everything you identified in school culture and climate. That a good culture and climate is one that's paying attention to, is one in which students are encouraged to show what they're feeling and to, and have people in the staff who pay attention to it and who are able to act upon it if there, there's an issue. And that's what that seems to be saying, that, you know, pay attention to what kids are doing.
Yeah. Okay, next slide, please. In a previous slide, we talked about the threat assessment teams be multidisciplinary. This is examples of the team members we have on our threat assessment teams. Notice that we have a Director of Security on there. This is a new position, but there are a wide range of people who could be involved in, in conducting a threat assessment.
Staff members are usually in a threat assessment or involved in threat assessment. I know these are all the possible roles.
It's this.
It's this whole mess.
Okay, it depends on, usually it's a specific student, so we're, you know, we're notifying the people that are a part of this group, and it, as it's indicated, the student's counselor, depending upon if they have an IEP, there might be a case manager. And then identifying who is available at the time, if they are, if they do have a psychologist or a social worker they meet with, or we might be pulling somebody who is just available. So school nurse typically isn't there, but it just depends on the situation. Five oh four coordinator rarely is there, but again, that's if we need additional information. So that is a all encompassing list.
So all with their individual lenses.
Yep.
That are, you know, helping to assess how we can best support the students.
The only addition I might give, if there's a particular teacher, coach, or sponsor that has, again, information, you might ensure them as well.
Okay.
Um, question on timing. How quickly or how long does it take for a threat assessment? Like, just to, to get a general idea, obviously, every situation is different, but is this something that we're talking minutes, hours, days, weeks, like, what will that threat assessment look like? And I know it depends, but just the timing question.
So it's a both end. So if there is a, you know, if there's information that we have, it's immediate. We're immediately within information, calling our threat assessment team together. And there will be an immediacy of having the student come in. There is typically an interview with a student with a psychologist, social worker. We go through a process in this assessment. And then usually after that, it's, you know, communication with the family. And then there might be follow up after that. But a part of the threat assessment process is that we continue to follow up. So we're, we're having frequent check-ins about the progress of that student. And depending upon, we know what comes out of that, that threat assessment process itself. So it really just depends on the situation, but it's not just a one and done. It's something that we're continuously following up on.
Next slide, please. Okay, so access control, this is another layer of mitigation. You know, we want school to, to feel like a place where students are cared for, that this is a place where they can pursue what they want to do in life, explore different things that they might want to do and really prepare to graduate and go on and pursue those things. But we have other layers, and access control is extremely important. As I said at the outset, access control basically means the people who are in the school are supposed to be in the school. The people who are not in the school are unable to get into the school. So you know, there's, there's some things here that that we were doing. Now, last year, the student check-in procedure, that was new. That was something we added after an incident that we realized, wait a minute, we need to know what door the student came in, because we couldn't, we couldn't, you know, we had a hard time finding a student. We implemented this. This served us very well on April fourth, because when we, once we knew who the student was, we were able to figure out very quickly what door that student came in. We're able then to use our cameras to figure out where was that student? Whom did that student talk to? Did that student give the student anything? And that's one of the reasons it took so long, by the way, because we needed to make sure that there was nothing passed off to anyone. We were not going to let those students out of those classrooms until we knew that the student in question had not given anything to anyone. We knew that because we were able to figure out what door the student came in as a result of this check-in procedure. We have other things as well. I just, you know, this last thing we also added last year, very important, well, we'll need to talk about that when we get the recommendations as well. A door that's popped, propped open for longer than three minutes, Brian, is it two? Sixty seconds. A door that's propped open for sixty seconds, an alert pops up on Brian's computer, and alerts pop up on other people, and we're sending people the door to figure out what's going on. Why is this door propped open? Now, you've heard of incidents in which doors have been propped open, and someone has gained access to this school. Who was then not, was not supposed to have that access? This is an example of access control. It's part of what we do. We think it's extremely important. Because schools have lots of doors. Now, schools have lots of doors, because if there were a fire, you would not want eighteen hundred students and, I don't know, a couple hundred, three hundred staff trying to go out one door. Right? So schools always have lots of doors. We've got some doors that are monitored by our, our great security staff, but not every door is monitored. So this, this is important. The door is propped open after sixty seconds, we will know.
Can I ask a question, something I didn't ask before, and I just thought about it? How quickly, for lack of a better term, can we deactivate an ID for someone being able to get in the building? So we either have a staff that we've chosen to not have them be in our building the next day, or a student, or, you know, anyone, how quickly can we make sure that they no longer have access, and how quickly do the people who are working those doors know that person shouldn't be here?
So. Very quickly, I don't have a time, I may have to tell you, but, oh, sorry. But you know, because as they scan in, it's, it's a different color, you're getting an alarm message. So you wouldn't, if there was someone who was on, who was on a watch right now, you would know immediately, because this, that wouldn't, they wouldn't be able to scan in, it would have a nerve.
But if that person decided to walk into another door, how quickly does the staff, et cetera, know of a student or a staff member who is no longer welcome in our building? How do we notify them, and how does that?
So I, I have your account pulled up. I can deactivate your card right now.
Okay, cool.
Pulled it up.
But.
I mean, it's assuming.
But my question is, I think it's, I don't know if it's to you or to our, who it is. To Ron, yeah, Ron in the sky. How quickly do we, if our security managers are the ones who do the IDs, so if I have a student.
No, but I'm saying not an ID, okay, because we have other doors that, as we know, at times, sometimes could be utilized. So if someone props open a door and they let someone in, which we hope they would not, but it's someone they recognize and say, oh, it's my science teacher, who's no longer a science teacher in our building. How quickly do the other people in our building know if something occurred? Let's say it's six o'clock at night, that a student or staff is no longer allowed in our building. Do we notify our full staff that that person is no longer allowed in our buildings? That's my question. And if we don't.
Because nobody should be allowing anybody into the building. I think that's the biggest piece, is that once they're coming into the building, that each one of them are, are scanning their IDs so that they can, they can, you know, they can get through the building, through the doors, they scan their ID, and so if a student was to be put on that list. Now, there is a piece of security where if there is a certain person who shouldn't be coming into the building that our security is notified of who that person is, and they know, you know, especially like a staff member, for example, that they aren't supposed to be in, so all of our security members know. We haven't been in a situation necessarily where it's kind of, I guess, to that level in which we would be notifying all staff, but I could imagine that in that case, given, you know, communication with, with Brian and Dr. Law, and with our, you know, even if it's law enforcement, that we would certainly be communicating with those individuals who need to know.
Yeah, so let's, let's back up and talk about a situation. So when Anne was asking, you know, students let us know we're concerned, we have this concern. If, if that concern tells us that there is a student we want to talk to before they enter the general school population, I, you know, when Ron heard this, he sent me a text, and he said, ten seconds. I, you know, when Ron heard this, he sent me a text and he said, ten seconds.
Okay, thanks, Ron.
So, which is really important because that that ten seconds, which means when a when a when a student scans in, then the light goes red and we know we need to have a, we need to have a conversation before you just go into the general school population.
Thank you.
There there are also legal limitations on some of this, too. I mean, I
I'm not a lawyer, nor do I pretend to.
Yeah, I mean, there's there's facial recognition software that could be purchased that, you know, could recognize, you know, do a biometric scan and recognize somebody instantaneously. But there are rules about consent.
Yeah.
To that kind of.
No, my thing was essentially what Ron had answered was, you know, how quickly if someone is no longer invited to our party.
Which is, which is a capability we have as of this year, which is, as I said already, this year is I'm sorry, yes, last school year. Which is, yes, already we're in this, yeah, sorry. All right, next, next slide, please. All right, so this is, this is the last layer in, not only in the presentation, but also, I guess, conceptually. There are, there are times that we do need to have a crisis response. And so we we put things, you know, up here. These are the things that that we have. We have, we have, you know, great cooperation with our local law enforcement. There are multiple agencies we have, we work with. All the things that we do, mentioned again, this camera system with with AI technology without going in into details. This is, this allows us to see things outside the school as well as inside the school that would alert us to something is happening. Very, very important. And as this technology continues to improve, I'm expecting this to become more and more part of what we do. We've got other things that are on this list. We've learned after the last incident we had, for example, if we've got law enforcement coming, we have to be able to give them floor plan, floor plans. So there are things that that are that we've developed every time we have an incident, we debrief it, we learn from it and we we make improvements as as we need, as as we can, as we need to. All right, next slide. All right, so obviously, once we post the slide deck, people will be able to see. So all right, let's get to the safety recommendations and this, these are the, the really the discussions that we're looking forward to. So next, next slide, please, John. All right, so the very next item, I believe, on the agenda is an action allows the board to take action on any or or all of these. These are recommendations we're making for this school year, broken them down by the layers of mitigation that we've been talking about. Under culture and climate, there are a couple, the supportive clubs for students and no club or sport. We spend three and a half million dollars on stipends for students in clubs and athletics. It is a significant amount of money in our budget and it is worth every dollar that we spend because we know that this is one of the ways that we can connect students to school and to adults and to you know, hold them close so that they are engaged in what we're doing and feel like they're part of a school community. Going back to that safety, climate and culture is part of safety. However, we talked about this with the mayor led this conversation with the boards, diversity, equity, inclusion committee. There are students who are in no club or sport, even though we have hundreds of these things. There are so many clubs, so many sports students can connect with. But there are students who are not in any of those. What if there were a staff member who is able to find those students and connect them to a club? What we're saying by this recommendation is we we want to have extra expense, we're willing to incur extra expense in order to pay stipends to those staff members who are able to engage those students. We think it is that important. We're not taking away a stipend in order to pay one. But we are saying that it's it's important enough that there is a staff member and actually there is, there is a teacher who's who's figured this out and we're going to work it out to engage students who have not been involved in any club or sport. The next is, you know, Debbie and Kathy were both talking about the importance of fostering student student relationships and student to staff relationships. Exploring a curriculum that could be used in in homeroom that would do that. Of course, there are costs associated with all these. And one of the things I want to mention about starting with this one, is if there's anything that we're doing that's going to impact staff, we will be working with them to figure this out. It's, it has to be the case that the the people who are going to be affected by something like a curriculum or whatever it is we're doing that affects them, that they're involved in these conversations and that we're working with them in order to figure out the best way to do this. We want to get this right, and the best way to do that is to be working with staff who are who are affected. So even though this is a recommendation, want to make really clear, there'll be a few of these where we're saying, you know, this is one that we actually have to talk to staff about to figure out how to implement this in order to get it right.
And this first one, the clubs for students who aren't in the club or a sport was a big part of the DEI committee, like you mentioned, in looking at that sense of belonging and a culture belonging and what we need to do so that each of our students, based off the data that we have. Because we we do collect quite a bit of 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 data and input from our students, from our staff, making sure that every student, each and every single student has that adult that they can go to. Because if it's not a hundred percent, we need to work towards a hundred percent so that every single one of our students feels like when they walk into our school, there is an adult that is that is there for them.
That's right. And there's no way to predict what that what that might be. I remember years ago, I attended a one of those breakfasts for national merit scholars. These, all these kids are smarter than I'll ever hope to be. And each student talked, stood up and said, here's, there's someone who's been important to me. And of all of those, I've heard the most, most time kids bring AP teachers, but there was one student I will never forget, stood up and said, my bass fishing coach was the most important person. Man, I'm thinking, my good God. I mean, I don't, I don't get fishing at all anyway, but here's someone who is like ridiculously smart, but it was bass fishing that connected this student most to school. So we never know what it's going to be. We've got to be really creative in finding out what students want to be part of and engaging them. But what this says is if that happens, we are, we are willing to say, we're going to put extra money toward those stipends in order to make sure that those, the the teachers who have found the students who have not been engaged are able to get us that good for that.
As of this year, both schools do have fishing clubs.
Excellent. I mean, because I did it, one of the founders.
One of the founders.
Well, for people who fish, it might make perfect sense. I was just, you know, so surprised at all this, like, really smart kids and bass fishing. All right, so camera room, security operation, that's there because it's part of preparedness and it's in order. I actually want to come, I'll circle back to that when we get to access control, but security film on exterior glass. This is first floor glass. We're recommending that we put a security film on the windows. Now, this is not bulletproof glass. That's a different, that's a different thing. But what a security film would do is, if someone were, this is part, you know, when we talked about the three threats that we're facing, if someone is wanting to be an armed intruder, we saw this in Nashville, they shot their way in. We've seen this before. By putting the security film on exterior glass, depending on the weapon used, you know, the bullets will go through and depending, again, on the, I guess, on the gun, I don't really think about guns either. Someone could be injured, but the main reason we're doing this is it prevents someone from shooting their way into school. That's why, that's why we think this this matters. All first floor glass, the one, you can shoot through the glass, but you can't shoot your way in. That's why, that's why that's on there.
And when the Department of Homeland Security gentleman was here last week and and we were going through the the detailed security plan, both of these items, the camera room, as well as the film, was absolutely endorsed by him. He thought those were necessities. And I mean, they talked about the actual product that would be purchased for security film and he even approved, I shouldn't say approved, he thought that that was probably, that was the right film to purchase.
It occurs to me the camera room operation sensor is probably a three, four because it's also access control, but it also does act as the command and control sensor and the, oh, my God, something happened.
That's right. And and that's one of the reasons we were, as we were trying to work with his image, working with a couple of people who are really good at this stuff is really hard because it's not as discreet and we would like them to be in order to talk about them.
Okay, I just have a question about the film, which Brian, my question is coming to you. As everyone knows, I was on a different board and they pursued some of these things, but went pursued the bulletproof glass. What happens in case of fire?
Ask this, this exact question to the fire department.
I figured you had. That's why, you know, I figured you had the answer.
They assured me they will get in. If they need to gain access, they will, they have the tools.
But do we have the tools to get out?
They have the tools to get in to the classroom. If if that's what you're talking about, coming in through a door, they will come, if they will come through that door.
Are you talking about going through glass?
Yeah, so we put these films on the glass and we now have one of these six hundred fires. Does that mean no longer we, no student can exit our building through a first floor window in case of fire? That's my question.
So first floor windows would still still operate. There's something that opened, right? But if you're talking, I I assumed you were talking about the fire department trying to go through a non door. They will, they will get in.
Fire department coming in and our kids going, that was my question. I just, in my mind, I and I don't mean to sound doom and gloom. In my mind, I was there six hundred fires a year. And I want to make sure that we're not putting things there that are making us safer to one thing and putting us in danger to another. That was my question.
So in our fire code, exiting through a window is not part of the the fire code. So you would be following your exiting paths. But know that windows are still operable.
Thank you.
They can be unlocked from the inside.
Yep, okay. That's why I wanted to make sure.
Okay, thank you. All right, next slide, please. All right, so also recommendation, additional card reader access for ingress and egress. This is extremely, extremely important. What this means is we have doors that are monitored by security. If someone comes in, security will say, may I help you? Do you have an appointment? If it's a student, they scan in. If it's, if it's an adult, we run them through our raptor system, you know, we do, we do, we have these things when people come into the building at one of those doors. However, if someone were to open a door for someone, because, you know, students are nice and students are, you know, sympathetic. And if they see someone standing outside a door and it's cold and clearly they want to get in, the normal human response is say, oh, here, let me open the door before we let you in. What this is saying is if you do not have access, I'm sorry, authorization to open one of those doors, we're going to get alerted. We're going to know. And one of the things we're going to do is we're going to have a camera on that door because we're wanting to see what's going on here. If there's a student letting another student in a door, we're sending our security team there. We're, we are, we are responding to this. What is happening in this situation? We have had this happen before. School, all schools have had that. They, schools have allowed, you know, students have allowed other students into school during school day, not supposed to. This, this, this happens. But the reason I wanted to mention this as related to the the camera system is it really is important now, as Anne mentioned, the Department of Homeland Security person said, this security operations center is important because we need to have the capability, if we're be getting these alerts that a door is propped open or that someone has opened a door without authorization to do so, we can put eyes on it to see what's going on. Now, if I, there's a, when I go to Highland Park High School, I generally park next to the daycare, hoping maybe they'll see me and say, hey, you know, you need to come read to us, because it's the best thing. But when I'm going out that door, if, once we have these things installed, I'm going to need to scan out of the door. Now, if I forget, someone should see the door open and it should not have, you know, by someone that was unauthorized. Oh, it's superintendent, he forgot again, you know, somebody needs to email that dude and tell him, you got to scan when you go out. But if it's a student letting someone in, that's a very different response. But in order for us to respond, understand what's going on, that security operations center with the cameras is extremely, extremely important. All right, access control, remote, if there are questions about these things, happy to talk about them. We, go ahead.
No, you go.
No, and the next one is we have fire doors in in all of our corridors. You probably, people have probably seen them, but there is a way to automate them so they they can close automatically. And there are instances in which we would want to be able to do that remotely, open them, close them. That's also one of the recommendations that there are these, especially, you know, like these hallways in Deerfield, they're so long to be able to very quickly close, close doors. Not just in long hallways, but we could, this is, you know, I'm talking to Brian about this. He's talking about how easy it is to scale this out and and have a lot of functionality that if we need to secure a part of the building by closing doors remotely, we're able to to do that. Interior door card readers. We've got two sets. Classroom is another remaining. Right now, to get in this building, you got to have a an ID to get you in. What about classroom doors? If students have IDs, they're able to get in the door, teachers able to get in the door. There are times when we want to be able to control who can get into a classroom. Now, there are, there are schools that have these. And of course, we're always constantly talking to schools who have made different decisions than we, than we've made, have different capabilities to, you know, to learn from them. But this is something that that we're recommending, we need to move in this direction. Both for classrooms and and other doors so that, you know, a custodian's room, for example, is just not, it would have to, it was only accessible like this. Okay, then this, the the last.
Question, I guess, the card readers, same ten seconds that we talked about earlier about access, excuse me. Same system, same ten seconds. If something needs to be shut off or turned on or changed.
Yeah, it's the same exact system we would just be building onto to the current system we have. So, yeah, if someone needed, if we needed to revoke rights, we could do that quickly. Assuming we knew who and we were in front of a computer, we could do it in ten seconds.
And if we were in a hard lockdown, I don't think that's even the word now. Is there ability for there to be remote control over shutting those doors and locking those doors?
So
Classroom doors.
Yeah, so we could see the status if the doors were open or closed. We couldn't, we could, there's multiple options in the system. So you could have a door closed and unlocked, you'd have a door locked. If the door is physically open in the open position, this is the system that is being talked about is not able to physically close the door.
Right. So it'd be, so I know on the fourth, we, there were some challenges with some of the doors being able to lock. In this case, they, you know, they're shut and then we're able to.
You could change the status of all doors to locked.
To locked.
Also important, it's the security operations center to be able to manage that and see what's going on and be in communication with people who are dealing with the situation. Okay, I, the, this last one. You know, as I said at the outset, we do not have, we have fire safety standards. We do not have the standards for dealing with the very specific threat of someone bringing a concealed weapon into school. And we, and we still think that climate and culture is our best, is our best layer of mitigation against that. Obviously, we know from experience and other schools know this from experience that it's, it doesn't always succeed. There are times when we are facing this this threat, this particular threat. In our situation, we have had a mass shooting in our community. We've had a student, although statistically it's more likely to be this and that, it actually, it actually, you know, happened, happened here. And I know, you know, we've, we've been doing work all summer on this. Brian has gone to schools downstate that have these things. We've been, I've been talking to superintendents. We've been doing work all all summer and we'll talk about that a little bit after this. But what it comes down to for me is in, if some, if we, if we were to recommend anything other than having a way to prevent someone from bringing a concealed weapon into the school, if something were to happen, I mean, I'm not going to be working forever. If you, if even years from now, I'm no longer here and I, I, I'm not going to be fired. I'm not going to be blackballed because I'm no longer in public education. I'd still be living with this. If someone actually brought a gun to school and something happened, I would be living with this. And and there, every school faces this. Every, every, every student in every school in the US knows how to get a gun into school. They put it in their backpack and they walk in the door. Kindergartners, first graders, they know how to do it. It's not, it's not, it's not different. The only thing that's different here is it happened here after we had a mass shooting in the community. So it just feels like, since there's no standard for safety of students and staff when it comes to gun violence, it's a community, it's a local community decision. And in our community, we've been through this. And it, and it was, it was horrendous. And as we're about to start school. And it, and it was, um, it was horrendous. And as we're about to start school from where I sit. Um, I know there, we've got best practices, we've got statistics, we have all of these things. But for me, the, I, I have to recommend to the board. That we implement on on a small scale, a weapons detection system and learn from it. We don't want to do anything to harm culture and climate. It's the last thing we want to do. There are uh so many things that we would, we we have to learn before we even, you know, uh, think this is successful. Or even consider um uh scaling, scaling it out. But we're at a point in the summer. That it's, it's now we have to make this recommendation because we could not possibly have started on day one with this, by the way. We'll make sure the board understands this. School starts on August sixteenth. It is, there would be no way that this could be up and running on August sixteenth. Why? Well, a couple of reasons. One, students are going to have to become used to it. We're going to have to teach them. We're going to have to do a lot in order to uh. Uh, help students figure out how to navigate this new way of entering school. We have to talk to staff because now it's changing the way they come into school. So there's a lot of work that we have to do with staff in order to get this, get this right. But we're at the point, I think, that we would like to recommend this to the board. We we learn from it. Uh, we got to talk to students. We have to understand is this, how is this impacting? You know, your experience in in school. What is, what is your experience now that we are trying this? We also, uh, when we're talking about recommend, you know, doing this on a small scale and learning from it. Doing it in such a way that it has a deterrent effect. So we're not going to say, okay, once this thing is live. Assuming the board, I mean, we got the board, this is for the board's consideration. Everyone will be happy to know I'm going to stop talking soon. Uh, assuming that the board supports this and it goes live, we're not going to say it, what, what door it's going to be. We, we, it would, it will just appear. And, you know, students, if they see, oh, well, this, I see that that it's at the door, I'm going to. I'm going to, now I think I'll go into a different door. In schools, that for us becomes reasonable suspicion. T L O versus New Jersey told us what we, the standard we need to meet in order to conduct a search. And it's not probable cause. That's what the police have to use. It's a much higher standard. For us, it's reasonable suspicion. Can we articulate? A suspicion to a particular student. And so a student might be saying, I'm not going in that door because I've got a vape pen. Okay, well, you know, if you decide not to go in the door that you're intending to go into, we, you know, we need to see what's in your backpack. So we want to do this in such a way that's determined, but I, but I, I, I am so, so concerned. That by doing this in order to address that one specific threat of someone bringing a concealed weapon into the school. Which if you look through all the things we're doing, we are not addressing that specific threat. This would address that specific that we cannot, we've got to be very mindful of not harming climate and culture um to do it. I know board probably has a lot of questions about this, a lot of discussion. If we could just get through the next couple of slides, lots, lots to talk about. So moving on, because this is actually, I know this is a big thing, but it's actually one of many. Next slide, please run. My voice gives up. Uh, two things in crisis, uh, I'm sorry, crisis response. One is, we need to find a a way of communicate. We, one of the things we learned is we have substitutes in our buildings. It's, it's, uh, we, we rely on them. They they pro- provide a very important service uh to students. And, you know, they're filling in for their regular teacher. We have to have a way of communicating with them when they're in the building. So one of the things we're looking at is is that some crisis communications app that we could geo fence. So if I'm going to stop in the building. And there's something happening, I can see on my phone, I can get information on my phone, what's, what's happening. If I am uh in the city or if I'm traveling outside, you would not, you would not get that. We could put our um, our uh. Plans that they're going to print out and put in each room, we could put those on them. So there are a lot of things we think we could do, we could do with this. The, the next and last thing of our recommenda- recommendations is having auto translation. So that when parents are registering their students or will have to do something, you know, different to get this information. Parents can indicate their preferred language. I cannot imagine what it must be like to be a parent for whom English is. It's good, it's serviceable, but they know something is critical. But they would so much prefer having it in their home language. This is really important. Uh, to us as well, to be able to communicate to um um parents in the language that they choose to be communicated in when something happens. So this is also uh something that we're recommending um for this year. Okay, so now I need to circle back, Ron, next slide. Need to circle back to this weapons detection system. There was really no way to do this elegantly. So this feels a little choppy, but I'm sorry, I apologize for that. We're looking at this slide. It is the case that when we ask people, what do you think about this? Seventy seven percent of the people we responded to. And there was enough of a response that we can say, this is representative of the population. Seventy seven percent of the people said, this, this is how we, how we feel. This is, this is important. Piece of information at a point in time. Now, everyone who who is in the survey business and we're getting. Well, getting, I should, I almost said getting close to twenty twenty four president's election. I'm not sure it ever stopped. Um, but you're going to be hearing a lot of polls. Polls are, anyone who knows, I, at least I hear people who know about these things. They say it's a point in time. And it's just looking at that particular point in time. So would that number be seventy seven percent today? I don't know. Would it be seventy seven percent on the first day of school? I don't know. But I do know this. Parents send to us the most important thing they have in their children. And the reason that we have parents who are so upset is they care so much about their kids and they are entrusting them to us. Not just to give them the education that they need to do what they want to do in life, but my God, to come home. At the end of the day. All right, next slide, please. Now, we asked this question. Some type of metal detector or weapons detection system is installed. How do you think it would affect having them in their school? All right, so make no difference, change for the better, change for the worse. Worried about this. We do not want to make any changes for the worse. We have to keep an eye on this. I'm not sure that a survey is what we're going to need. If the board approves implementing this on a, on the small scale that we're recommending. I'm not sure we need to do surveys, but we need to be talking to students. We need to be hearing about all students and their experiences of this to ensure that. This experience of of them in school is not being adversely affected um by this. This is something we need to keep an eye on. It's the next slide, please. All right, so still thinking about this, the greatest part of the cost of installing either a metal detector systems, uh, blah, blah, blah. Uh, is the personnel required. Okay, that's true statement. Uh, we have expenditure recommendations coming out of the board. None of them, except the particular stipends for clubs include any staffing. That's the biggest expense. So if, when asked in this way, if we had to, um, uh, I'm sorry, I cannot. It's, I cannot see the slide. Yeah, this is, this is a throughput question. I apologize. I'm really anxious to get to next slide. This is a throughput question. Would you favor opposing some weapons detection system? If it doesn't require them to remove their belts. Yes, of course. Well, it's kind of, well, somewhat favors so strongly. We're not recommending weapons, uh, a metal detector like you do at the airport. We want this to be one where, you know, you're going to take out your computer. That's, you're just going to get used to that. Well, some model like this set it off. I don't know. How to get used to that. What about your cleats? What's, you know, all these things that you get used to. It's not, we're not saying like at the airport. We're wanting to have a greater flow through than you have to do it at at the airport. All right, this is the slide I want to get to, this next one, because this is the one that's really important. Oh, my, my goodness, so important. Ron, next slide, please, of this survey. What? It's the one that says affect the atmosphere of the school? I'm sorry.
Yeah, this is personnel.
Oh, I see. Yeah, the one before it. That's the one I thought was coming next. I got confused. Apologies. Please go back. That one. If some type of metal detector or weapon detection system is installed, how do you think it would affect them? Okay, still not the one. May not, it's not in there. There was a question that we asked. I'm not sure how this like left out. There was a question we asked that said, all right, if we have personnel staff, personnel cost. How are you still in favor if it requires us to reduce something like clubs and activities? Now, we didn't say that that was going to be reduced. No one said that. It said if. That word was really important. If. And I, all these, all these comments about we're going to be reducing, no, we're not. We spent three and a half million dollars on clubs and activity sponsors. And not only that, we're recommending the board, we actually spend more if there are teachers who are able to engage students in clubs uh that have not previously been engaged. So that is, that is not the case. And by the way, no one asked me how I read that slide. No one asked me my interpretation of, but here's my interpretation. People want us to mitigate against this very specific risk of bringing a concealed weapon in the school. But they don't want to reduce the things that are important to them. They want us to figure it out without reducing activities and and athletics. That is, that, and that is our, we've got to figure out how to do this because there is no way. That we would want to reduce something that actually is promoting the very thing that is most important to us. So I want to make really clear about this. If the board supports this and there's extra staff costs, we're not going to be reducing. Clubs and sports in order to pay for this. Never said that. Question doesn't even say that. I want to make, make this very clear that we are not reducing anything that's, that's actually making our students safe in order to pay for something. That's going to mitigate against this specific red uh threat. And I apologize, uh, somehow that slide didn't make it. All right, next slide, please. Next steps. So since spring, we've been, oh, my goodness, here, here are all the things we've been uh doing. We've investigated, we've been testing, touring. Uh, we, we, there's a lot of of work, but this small scale rollout at the beginning of the year, not day one. I know of a school district that that had, that made the decision to try this. And they made the decision and three days later, they were trying it in winter. It did not go well. We will not make those mistakes. There's no way if Brian is, is, is overseeing implementation, I assure you. This will be well thought out. It'll be well planned. It will be, it will be smooth. But it's going to take us a while. This is why the small scale role at the beginning, I do not want anyone to think that we are doing this on August sixteenth. It's going to, it's going to take some time.
You didn't start looking, you know, the spring has been focused on weapons detection systems. Prior to that, though, there, there has been consistent uh research on metal detectors as that technology has evolved. Um, because I'm, I know I've been in meetings while I've been on the board that this, this um subject has come up. So there's been a lot of due diligence since spring, but it, spring wasn't a brand new idea. Before July fourth, correct. Correct.
Four weeks sounds every time we hear an incident somewhere else.
And that's part of our regular closed session is the discussion of security. And and the, and uh, uh, about a year, well, whatever it was, over a year, I can't remember. When we were, we, we were looking at a system and the error rate, I don't think that's the correct term, sorry, but the error rate was, I don't know, like twenty percent. Well, you can't have something that is giving us a false positive twenty percent of the time. Think, I, that's a lot of students. If they're eight, if there are eighteen hundred students at Island Park High School, we have three hundred and sixty of them. Who are going to be pulled aside. And I mean, this, this would, so there were some, the technology wasn't quite there yet. It's, it's evolved. And there's a new system. In fact, uh, Rockford Schools is, has uh adopted. Um, that we'll want to take a look at. But yes, we've been talking about this for a long time. We're at a point where there, the, the system that we've been investigating is accurate enough. And gives us the, the kinds of um functionality we need that we're, we're ready now to um recommend this. Um, next slide, please. All right, also really important, what we're, in terms of recommendation, it's just at arrival. Uh, schools are busy places. Uh, they're twenty four seven, really. Um, it seems like uh seven days a week for sure. Um, but right now, what we're saying is this is arrival only and we're, we want to do it, as I mentioned earlier, in a pop-up fashion. Once it's, it, it, the board supports this, um, it will be only um. And it will be at random doors and it will be unannounced. That unannounced part is, and the pop-up part, that's also part of uh deterrence. But it's, it's only at arrival and we'll, we'll rotate it around and we'll go to randomizer.org or I'm sure Debbie has a just, a statistics book in the back. We can find some random numbers, the old fashioned way. All right, next slide. Next, next couple of slides, talk about the, just speak to the, the, the due diligence. And, you know, I think it's important that the board sees this. Um, not just because we want to, I'm actually showing off all the work that Brian's been doing. Um, but it's also trying to illustrate that the experience of coming into school is going to be very different. And so this is, you know, that's like, this is the staffing plan view. We haven't implemented anything, so we're not, we're not quite sure. But it, it looks, it, it, this is, this is a drawing of just a abstract drawing of where it might be. In the next two slides, we'll see what it could look like at Deerfield and at Island Park. Ron, if you could advance one. DHS, it might look like this at the main entrance.
And I think one of the things that has the ability for this to be more successful is, you know, post COVID, we had our students start to scan their IDs. And so they are used to queuing up and doing that piece to it. This is just another new piece to it. Um, it's a different piece, a very lot, but I'm saying in terms of our kids. Whereas if we would have been talking about this three years ago, before they scanned IDs, et cetera, where they all just entered en masse. That's what I mean. And I didn't mean to mitigate what we're doing, but that is a big piece that. Has helped us through this is the sense that at least one of these steps our students have been doing for a couple of years. We're not throwing all of this at them at once.
Main entrance of DHS, Ron, next slide, please. And this, this is what the vine entrance, you know, might look like. Again, we, we would need to actually start implementing this to see what happens. All, if all the students who come through this door late to first period, we've got a problem. Big problem. If, if as a result of this thing, you know, being, you know, randomly uh popping up. Uh, if, if it's, if it's causing uh significant numbers of students to experience stress. Um, we need to, we need to pay attention to that. Um, if, if it's, if it's starting that field of school and uh, you know, being in school on the first day. It's one of the things that is just so great. If all of a sudden that starts to feel different in a way that is not good. We, we need to be able to come back to the board and say, we've got a problem here. Because not everything that's implemented, I have no doubt about Brian's ability to implement this from an operational standpoint and get the throughput down. You know, it is as, as good as anyone can do it. But then there's this other part of, of, of students' experience that this is what we have to really have to pay attention to. I know I keep coming back to this. Next slide, please run. All right, so learning and training impact on climate and culture assessment and feedback, all this has to work. Um, just want to, you know, come back to this thing. We, we, as, as if the board supports doing this on a small scale. It's going to take a lot of training, but you know, and a lot of, we're going to do a lot of learning, had to monitor the impact on culture. Climate, we have to, you know, assess how we're doing, uh, report back to the board and and use the feed, feedback in order to, you know, uh, assess whether. This is doing what we want it to do. All right, so next steps. Um, there we, now, now we're just talking generally. Uh, the board approves recommendations, raw expenditures, you know, we, we'll, we'll get to work. And um. Starting to implement uh things that need to be implemented and and procure things that need to be uh procured. But working with all stakeholders, this is so important. Finalized any implementation of anything that's impacting uh students and staff. We want to, we have to be listening to our students and staff. Um, as, as we go through these steps to make, to make sure we get this right. We'd like to send um a communication to parents uh tomorrow. And the reason for that, this, this, I know this has taken a long time. I appreciate the board's patience um and and listening to all this. But it does represent the um amazing amount of work that so many people do uh to try to keep our students uh safe. Students and staff safe from uh gun violence. There's a lot here. It has become a big part of, of what we do. Which is one of the reasons that we need a director of se- security to oversee this function, to lead this function. Um, as security becomes, you know, an, an ever bigger part of, of, of what we score, what we do. I've said so many times, we need to learn. And if, if all of this is successful, then we need to recommend a, a vendor to the uh or for approval. Mercifully, I'll stop there. The last slide is just some um links. Mercifully, I'll stop there. The last slide is just some links.
Are there any board questions or discussion now, or do we want to hold that until we go to the action items?
Then hold it till we go to the action items.
He demonstrated how. Complex this, these issues are and how they touch upon every part of, of, of our schools. We'll move on to public comments now. Per policy two dash two thirty at each open school board meeting, the Board of Education has a public comment period for a maximum of thirty minutes. We are ready to listen and appreciate your comments. We recognize that it takes time and work to prepare a three minute statement. Public participation is not intended to be a back and forth discussion between the public and the board. Questions asked during public participation may be sent via email to be answered subsequent to the board meeting. Alexi. First up, we have Chad Rankin.
Thank you once again for allowing me to speak this evening. This is a continuation of the weapons detection discussion from April eleventh, two thousand nineteen. Here's a quote, the district needs to work on communications with the one thirteen community. We need to take communication very seriously and reach out to the parents, teachers and students. To listen to what they have to say and move forward in a way that is much more open and transparent than sometimes. District one thirteen had seemed in the past, end quote, said by someone in this room. So do I dare say? That in some respects, it seems as if we are still living in the past. For the taxpayers, I must ask this district. If I want to know the dollar amount spent for district security survey, which asked me a factual question of which the district already knew the answer. As it was on the books and its own records, which question could not be completed because no selectable response would apply. Therefore not allowing me to complete the survey. Would I be told the amount of taxpayer money? To send a survey to me, which was discarded and not received by this district. Which sent the survey. And I'm understanding that a Freedom of Information Act request for the disclosure of the total cost of the security survey was never adequately fulfilled. And so what was the cost? Is this the policy? Do we have any gang activity or people desiring to injure or kill others in or near our school district? For example, one summer, gunshots rang out in the streets of my neighborhood, allegedly in a gang shooting incident. And who heard those shots? I did. And has there been any other known violence, terrorism and crime within or near this school district? So I can testify that we have a problem to deal with. Whose daughter was hiding in the library this past election day, April fourth? Mine. Who attended a high school where there was a personal belonging search at the door every day before entering the school building? Me. And we were all on time. So I can testify that it works quite well because no one knows how to pack. A backpack with a gun and walk on in because, oh, you can give that to us here. It works. After a problem was identified, a new interchange was constructed to replace the signal intersection of US forty one and Claybury Road for health and safety and to save life. After. Possibilities of sabotage or identified gates limiting vehicle access to the lakefront were installed ultimately for the health and safety. Of the larger north shore community. After a problem was identified, a new pedestrian tunnel was constructed under the railroad. At the Rubinia Festival Platform for Health and Safety and to save life. And after more than one concert, when passing by the beautiful fountain, walking through this tunnel of safety, I've noticed silently there against the wall. Are the metal detectors, the devices so many of us step through, which were used to make concerts safe and enjoyable as possible. And I wonder, all these potential hazards have been greatly reduced with infrastructure at all these locations in Highland Park. However, for our soft target school buildings in this district where problems have been identified in plausibility and in actuality with evidence of such problems. Equal effort and diligence.
Yeah. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Continue. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? No.
Hearing no further public comments, we will move on to our action items. The first action item up this evening is the twenty twenty three, twenty four school safety recommendations and expenditures. It is, it is recommended that the board of ed, recommended that the board of education approve the twenty twenty three, twenty four safety recommendations and expenditures. And not to exceed amounts as presented. Is there a motion? Is there a second? Is there any discussion?
I, I would like to make a motion to divide the weapons detection system separately.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I, I will be honest with you. I think that. We have been incredibly diligent and unfortunately through mostly closed session, discussing a lot of these things. But I really appreciate the diligence that our administration has done. To give us a truly comprehensive list of things that we can do that are tangible to help.
Okay. We will first, so with that motion being seconded. We will first vote on the motion to divide the question to remove weapons detection systems for.
Sorry, I've got off too quickly.
No, no worries. For a separate vote, I want to note that voting. Yes, for the motion does not obligate the board member to vote no or to, to vote for or against. The divided motion simply to allow the consideration of the weapons detection system as a separate item. Can we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Newman.
Hi.
Mr. Neder.
Hi.
Ms. Shapiro. Yes, please. Mr. Brazza.
Hi.
Dr. Elliot Schirmer. Hi. Mr. Struck.
Hi. The motion passes. Okay. So now we will vote on the original motion without the weapons detection system. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? This is solely on the items other than the weapons detection.
What I just said before.
And these items, as you so eloquently articulated, Bruce. Are exactly what's in, you know, the FBI and the Secret Service's reports about the culture being so key to. Safety of students and that the students have a safe adult they can go to. And that teachers are educated, you know, on what to do to respond to credible reports of violence. So. These make complete sense.
Question on timeline, obviously, these are all. It's a number of different things that some will take longer than, some will take longer than others. So is it correct to assume that over the course of the school year? We'll be getting periodic updates of what's been completed, when it's been completed. Is that a closed session? Is that an open session? Can you talk more about that?
Yes. So the regarding timelines, there are. I, as you said, different things run different timelines. The access control system for being able to can, you know, lock down the. Corridor, that's going to facilities committee for review. So obviously that was going to take, well, there's, there's a lot of design in that. And there are things that need to be, other things can, can be done. More quickly, I assume Brian would, could, has a better sense of timeline and things. There's, there's lead time. I would say that the most important thing, most important part of the timeline, however, are, are, are those items that. We needed to wait until students and staff were back in school in order to work through, you know, talk to them as, as appropriate. Now, we're probably not going to be talking to students about additional exterior and, and card reader access for ingress, for ingress and egress. We're not talking to students about that one. We are talking to staff about them because it's definitely going to affect how staff, you know, or what they need to do if they're going outside the school. So. The, the ones that require a lot more staff input, you know, that's, that's, that's going to be probably sore. But the important thing is, and this is always the case in one thirteen, we, we work really hard to get it right. We're not, we're not, we're not taking time, but at the same time, we don't, we're not rushing because we want, we want to get it right. So. And then another question you asked is coming back to the board. You know, absolutely, we need to be providing updates to the board. A part of this is, you know, the, how often does the board want to hear about this? Is it monthly? Is it quarterly? There are, you know, various ways we can do it, you know, meet with board president, vice president. Before every meeting to talk about agenda. So we're happy to provide. Updates to the board. And now I know we're talking just about these issues and not. Other one. But yeah, I think that's a very important part of this because we're committing significant resources. To this and it's taking a lot of time and there's nothing more important than we, that we do than this. So yes, we absolutely have to. Reporting back to the board.
And then question on the support for clubs or students not in a club or sport that do not exceed amount of forty thousand. Month into school, forty thousand is already been expended. I'm assuming you'll come back to the board. Here's what we found. Here's what we've seen. Is that something that'll take place?
So, so we have a budget right now for stipends for clubs and activities and, and though, yes. That, that will, we'll be spending against, against that budget. We've already started. We've got sports starting and we have marching band. What this is referring to is we're, we're asking the board to approve an amount of money that would be in addition to what's already, already been. Committed. So, and now the, the criteria for those stipends are, are. Different than, you know, what we normally do for activities. We have a lot of sponsors of activities. This is the hard part. I'll just make sure the board is aware of this, who are sponsoring clubs and they've been waiting. For the budget to open up in order for them to have a stipend. So there's, if you will, a line. What we're saying about this and, and I know, I mean, I'm not saying this is to use this. So this is news because you were in the DEI committee and we're talking about it. It's really, you know, just in providing the information. As we discussed with the DEI committee, there are those students, we're trying to figure out how to engage in school. And so it's, it's an amount of money on, on top of that. So it's. It's, it's functioning in that way. If we needed more, of course, we'll come back to the board, but that would be a great problem to have.
Any other discussion? Uh, you know, I'm going to call an audible. I'm in calling the vote on the original motion without the weapons detection system. I'll go and read the items we are voting on and not to, not to exceed amount, simply so that it's available for anybody who's listening or. Watching subsequently. We're voting on supportive clubs for students and no club or sport and an amount. It, that are currently in no club or sport and an amount not to exceed forty thousand dollars. Curriculum for homeroom that fosters student to student relationships and student to staff relationships. In amount, in an amount not to exceed fifty thousand dollars. I, the development of a camera room, security operations center and an amount not to exceed two hundred forty thousand dollars. Security film on exterior glass and an amount not to exceed two hundred seventy three thousand dollars. Additional exterior card reader access for ingress and egress in an amount not to exceed five hundred seventy one thousand dollars. Access control system equipped with remote door release and lockdown capabilities. Approval of this item will move, move this for recommendation to the facilities committee for further review. Interior door card readers in classrooms and an amount not to exceed one point one six five million dollars. Interior door card readers for other, for other doors within, within the schools in an amount not to exceed. Seven hundred forty three thousand dollars. And a crisis communications app with features such as geo fencing for enhanced communication with substitutes. And easy access to plans and maps and then in an amount not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars. We're voting on these items and we have a roll call, please, Ramona.
Mr. Neder.
Hi.
Ms. Shapiro. Yes, please. Mr. Brazza.
Hi.
Dr. Elliot Schirmer.
Hi.
Ms. Newman.
Hi.
Mr. Struck.
Hi. The motion carries. We will now move to the vote on the weapons detection system. This is a vote to approve a weapons detection system in an, in an initial amount not to exceed eighty thousand dollars. Do we have any discussion on this item?
One of the concerns that has been brought up is about how weapons detection systems will impact culture and climate. So can you speak to ways that you might envision preliminarily? So like, I know you don't, you might not have a full plan in mind, but. What do you envision could be ways that we could help monitor this?
One of their, some of the ways we've talked about. We need to hear from students directly. Each school has, has homeroom. There are, there are small groups, students who are, you know, working with social workers, counselors. There, there are a lot of, of settings in which we're able to begin to understand. What is the impact of climate and culture and is it, is it extensive enough? I mean, if it's negative, is that negative impact extensive enough that would cause us to rethink this? There are other things that we can do at attendance, you know, if there was a student, you know, if there's a student who's not attending school. There are people who reach out to that student to try to find out what, what, what's going on and if they're, you know, so this might be, this would be another opportunity for us to, to understand. If, if there is some impact on students, we can, we, through Panorama, we have. We, we conduct surveys in which we're asking students, basically, how are you feeling? We've got baseline data for that. We're able to compare it, you know, to previous administration survey. By the way, whenever we do this, we are required, parents can see all these survey questions, not trying to hide anything here. So there, there are ways that are a little bit more quantifiable, but I, I, the reason I'm mentioning, keep saying hearing directly from students, it's just really, really. I, I think it's really important that when we have students in, whether it's in the classroom or in a homeroom or other settings, that we. Find those opportunities to use those smaller settings as, as focus groups and begin to. You know, I, I know that there are people who, who run focus groups professionally and one of the things they do is they're listening to all. You know, what people are saying in, in very different locations, you know, in these different groups. To see what's emerging as, as themes. And this is the thing, I think that's going to probably give us much more information about the lived experience students have. When they're in school as we are changing the way that they enter school to see if. It's, it's having a negative impact. The, the problem, of course, it's, it's really difficult to measure this as, as accurately as, as other things. And the other problem we have in terms of measurement is we think this is going to have a, a deterrent effect. How do you measure the effectiveness of a deterrent effect? There's one way, of course. But then someone could say, well, you know, we don't have any more other, we don't have any further instance like we, of, of someone bringing a concealed weapon to school. Because that's the very specific risk we're talking about. We don't have any more of those. Is that because we have weapons detection system? Or is it because the April fourth was an outlier event? I, I, there's no, there's no way to know that. So. The measurement part is, is, is difficult. I, I know that I've talked to a couple of people who are really eager to figure out how to talk to our students and. Set that up so that it's, it's, it's a little bit more methodical. I have. A, or has it made yet, obviously, but I have a stu, superintendent advisory committee of students. And I'm constantly asking them these kinds of questions. It's, it's not representative of the whole, but it's, it's a, it's a group of students who. Will tell me exactly what they think. And, and so putting this together, I think will give us a sense of what is, what is happening with our students. But it's not going to be perfect. I don't know how we get to this.
Sorry. Climate and culture are sort of macro concepts. You know, do you anticipate there's a part of this, there'll be mechanisms? To maybe help individual students who may be having discomfort or to help them get acclimated or understand what's going on, that sort of thing.
One of the things we, I think we are really good at, and schools have had to become really good at this is. We know that for students to be successful in school, it's not just how smart they are. It's not how much homework they complete. It really has to do with their entire social, emotional wellbeing. And we have a lot of, of staff who are devoted to that. So if students have discomfort because of this. Or they have discomfort because of other things, we have staff in place who are able to. Work with those students at, at various levels of, of time and intensity. We have drop in centers, wellness centers. Students know they can, they are able to drop in without an appointment and they can talk to someone. And so I'm, I'm, I'm very, very confident in the school's ability to work with students who are. Experience that, that level of, you know, stress, anxiety, whatever is, is, is bothering them. Experienced that that level of, you know, stress, anxiety, whatever is 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 bothering them. The thing that I I am most concerned about is the the like, right, it is a macro concept. But is there this impact on school culture that is, you know, at that kind of macro level? When you walk into a school. I I swear this, I test this every time I walk into a school, you get a feel. You get a vibe and 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 different schools have different vibes and 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 so. I mean, that's that sounds scientific, I know. But it's that's 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 the thing that I'm I'm worried about. Not just the individual students who are struggling, but just the the vibe of the school where we're about to change that in a way. That we we absolutely do not want to do because you know how important it is.
I a hundred percent agree that implementing a weapon detection system will. Allow parents to feel that their kids are safer, that parents will feel as if they have a sense of control. I think we have to see how the staff and the students feel, you know, once it we're in. I also hundred percent think that it can serve as a deterrent, of course. Where I am wrestling is, you know, when we've read these reports. From the FBI, from the Secret Service, from Homeland. Every single one of them says you implement a weapon detection system and there's increased community violence that spills into the schools. You know, the examples are given Santa Fe High School is an example and Richland, Wisconsin was an example of just two. So, a- and. After July fourth. You know, the DOJ said no, when we asked, do we implement metal detectors? They said no. The police said April fourth, the student was not intending to cause harm. You know, it was a teenager making a horrifically bad decision. Which is what teenagers or teenagers to a certain degree are supposed to do and we're supposed to be in an environment in which they're allowed to do that. Not to the extent the student did, but the student will also receive all the consequences of their actions. And so I my long story, my long lead up, my question is, what are the facts that are telling us? That we have increased violence in our community that's spilling into the schools? Because we've always made our decisions based upon the experts. And so that's where I really struggle.
You know, I don't, I don't think I have an answer directly to that. I do know that. At least I observed. There was a shooting in a high school in Oxford, Michigan. And. Without getting into specifics of it, because I I think it could have been prevented based on what I've read, but setting that part aside. There was a shooting. And after the shooting, they implemented metal detectors. That school has no greater statistical chance of having another incident than any other school. Just because you've had one doesn't mean all of a sudden you're immune. But they they implemented metal detectors. After the school shooting, why, why did they do that? We, you know, in in when we're talking about this and Brian is all about operations. We are, we are talking about physical safety. We're talking about trying to protect students and staff. And and we're doing this in very kind of ab- abstract and and rational way, which means the experts matter, which means these. Statistics matter when it comes to the the work of keeping students and staff physically safe. However, there's also a psychological safety that 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 really. That really matters. And I think it matters in those communities that have gone through something, which is why Oxford, Michigan, if someone thinks, why? Why would you put in a metal detector after the fact? If if you think about the need to provide psychological safety, it makes sense. And I I think that that is one of the things is listening to audience communication and and listening to, you know, emails that we're receiving and and. Talking to the people who have been in these situations who are in this god awful club. That our community is is in. It's a that's that that feeling of psychological safety is is extremely important. And then the 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 final thing I say is that this is personal for me. The board looks to me to make a recommendation. I. Try to think through things as much as possible. I I talk to people, I I listen, debate and argue, but at the end of the day. It's it's something I I need to make a recommendation that ten years from now I can look back and said and think. I I I made the right recommendation. As I said, for me, it's just this, I I. In our school community, every every person, every superintendent, every school administrator could have this up, but in our school community, well, given what we've been through. It's it's just, it just feels more real and I. I I could not recommend anything other than providing not just mitigation against this very specific risk. Regardless of how unlikely this to happen again, it did happen here. So I'm not sure what what that does to probability. But but also one that I think is is going to provide for more psychological safety for students and staff. We could test that idea, of course, if it provides more psychological safety. But but to your original point, I I have nothing on point, you know, to say to that, it's I'm I'm kind of. Not addressing it. So I guess I lose the debate in that and that's. But it it that's the only way I can respond.
Um, I'll be honest, I'm struggling with us taking this vote at all this evening. We are a board of seven. We were elected to make decisions as a board of seven and by no fault of one board member. Hundred percent that board member is not here to make. And I know that my FAN on list delays things by a couple of weeks, but every one of our seven board members should be voting. Should be giving an iron A to this and the fact that we don't have that ability tonight bothers me. This is a big one and I understand and you know, and I get it fully why we can't, okay, because of the timing. But I can't say that that doesn't. That me. Um, with that, Ann, I totally, I am outside of a COVID vote. This is the one that has kept me up at night. Because I do not, I have tried and I think we showed as a board during COVID. We made our decisions based on what the experts recommended to us. We made our decisions based on the guidance from the people who know far more than we do about this. And based on those visits that you have done and that Brian has done and that Bruce has done with all the people out there that know far more about this. They're not recommending this for us. They're recommending this, what we just approved. That being the case, I'm the only person here to the best of my knowledge that has taught in a school district. Prior to, well, no, that had an actual shooting and I was an employee of Winnetka School District. And I can't take that piece out and I can't take my emotional piece of experiencing that in Winnetka. And then being here now. And I believe that that student made a really dumb decision. But that decision could have gone a different way. So I'm very much struggling with my emotional decision on this one. And the way I voted on everything else in the past, and I'm still struggling this as we are sitting here.
Could I just interject in the procedural point of order? Do you know how much I respect you and 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 you're concerned about having all seven board members? And again, this, as you said, this is of no fault of the. There is, if you if you wanted to propose a motion, there is a a motion in Robert's rule of order that you would say something along the lines of.
Oh, no, I know.
Move the question to be postponed in the next meeting. And so that that becomes, you know, procedurally a way of 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 doing this if you want to, I'm just.
It's in my folder. Yeah, I'm well aware of the fact that I can.
There is a current motion before the board that we would have to move to withdraw.
Exactly. And that motion has been had and approved and so therefore I would not. Do that. That motion has been approved, therefore that is the motion on the table, but being the case, I cannot. Say that I'm happy about taking a vote now when only six people can vote Iron A.
I am just going to make an institutional observation that this is a an issue about which there is profound disagreements. From people of of people coming from the most sincere and honest places. And those disagreements arise out of good faith disagreements. There is no, no. Ulterior or spurious motives involved. Fact is, there is no explicit guidance and perhaps because of the multitude of social and political implications of the decision we're being asked to make. It's important to remember that a vote tonight that is not unanimous is not an expression of division. It's not an expression of 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 somehow irresolvable difference. It's simply a reflection of legitimate disagreement among people who are committed to the mission of the school district. You know, after we have this vote tonight, I have every confidence that no matter what the outcome is. As a board, we will work together to and work to fulfill whatever our vote is. And to fulfill to the best of our abilities the recommendations of the of the superintendent. And to continue to carry out our obligations to to this school district and its mission to be a place. Of inspiration for every each and every student within our bill within our care.
Well said.
I guess, is there any further discussion?
So, um. Jody, I will say my Apple Watch has gone off for a high heart rate a record number of times. This is an incredibly emotional discussion and Bruce, to start with what you shared in the beginning, this shouldn't feel normal and this shouldn't feel okay and this definitely doesn't feel. Normal or okay. The only thing that I can add from my own lived experience and my own. Experience as a graduate of Highland Park High School. Is when I hear things like random and pop up and unannounced, it makes me nervous. And I only share that not as an indictment on our system. I think we, that each and every single staff member has the best intention for the students at. Halliburton High School and at Deerfield High School. But for me and for, I would argue, I will only speak for myself, but. Random airport searches happen a little too randomly for me. Can't prove it and science may or may not back that up, but I would not be able to live with myself. Without sharing that and sharing my experience, which I imagine is shared by by some. My. Goal and hope and desire, as I believe is shared, is not to stop the the gun when it's at our weapons detection system. But stop it from ever even crossing the mind of the student that is even thinking about it. So one of the things that we haven't talked about is how we harness the power of our students. And the communication that they have and the fact that on the fourth. They instantaneously were able to share information amongst each other and across that and we aren't harnessing. That power, we aren't harnessing that voice, but to be able to share information. I think is an opportunity that we that we have to to learn from what that looks like. I don't know. But I think there is that student. Voice and that student piece that we haven't discussed, it's been minimized in public comment. It's been minimized in some discussions about. So what, however you feel, and that's fine if you're coming from a position of power where your identity. Didn't make you feel othered or feel less than to no fault of any other individual. But as an individual from a class where I felt othered, where I felt less than. To have a weapons detection system at the at the school where we know that we have other measures that we can take, I cannot support at this time.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion?
I guess what I would ask is if this is voted on. That we are very clear to our new director of security who we with this failure, not giving her the opportunity to come on and. Figure out. Yeah, figure out what our ship looks like and and adjust the ship. We're dictating what she will be implementing.
And Ann, I totally agree with you. This seems backwards to me.
She does, however, come from a district that. For different reasons.
Correct. There's a reason why.
Yes.
What are the facts? And so, but my, what I ask is that. That if at any point during the the implementation that we get to a point where it. You know, isn't going to work for students, isn't going to work for staffs, that we're given this group the the ability to say not yet. And making sure that if we're going to buy equipment because of supply chain issues, that we have the opportunity that we could return them. I want the opportunity for the right folks around the table, which I know I've said before, to be able to. Put this in place where, but stop at any point if it's not the right time. Because that's where I am with Jaime is it's it's not now. It's not, no, it's not.
I, well, I think.
Yeah, go ahead, sorry.
I think to Jaime's point and almost speaking to what Ann was saying, maybe even before we get to the point of. Do we have a stop in place? Can we appropriately train whoever is going to be implementing this on a day to day basis so that we are. Solving for problems like implicit bias. We don't want the system to. Accidentally or indiscriminately target certain students where they are coming into the building feeling like, here we go again. I know I'm going to be the one that's pulled to the side to be double checked or whatever might occur. So I think. Before we even get to the point of saying, what can we do to stop it before, you know? Because we're seeing that it's not working where we want it to. I think we should be thinking of. How can we anticipate some of the issues that will come up and train our team appropriately to mitigate some of that?
Uh, Brian, just to address some of the concerns about, you know, if we in in our evaluation and and the testing process. We do have the option to rent these detection systems.
Yes, it can be purchased or rented.
Okay.
So. I don't know if I'm actually in in a position at all to be able to speak to what Jaime said or. Dirty, yes, said. So important. So important. You know, I I I just, it it is, it is, it is not in my experience, so I don't know. But we we have to, you know, when we talk about random, by the way, we're not talking about like, you know, random students, you know, that 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 worries me as well. The the randomization would be of the doors. So. Which that's, I think that's one way to maybe address that. We got, we have a, you know, it's interesting. I I actually don't know how this vote is going to go, but just as when we came off the. July four shooting and we were so concerned about the trauma that students would have had. From that shooting and we put people who have had trauma training and who are able to deal with that level of what we found was. The trauma our students' experience was there before July fourth. Was was other than July fourth and it didn't really matter if the trauma that they were experiencing wasn't related to July fourth. It's prominent nonetheless. So this is, you know, not only the school climate, Greg, we're talking about this macro level, we talked about, you know, the, you know, individual students. Who could feel marginalized as a result of this. You know, I, we we've got to figure out how to make sure that doesn't happen. I suspect that when we do, if we get, if we get, you know, we we've got. Smart people who can figure this out, but I suspect that what we're going to find is that. In trying to address this situation, we're going to learn a whole lot about other ways in which they feel marginalized and and. This, this could be, this could be really important for that reason. But we've got to zero in on on this particular thing and I'm not, and Jaime, I'm not, I'm not saying this in order to. Try to get you to change your mind or sway your vote. Please, please, please. I'm not saying it for that reason. It's a, it's it's just, it's just so important. We we have to figure this out, not only for this, but I think in in. In general, because students who feel marginalized felt marginalized before this thing. And if this makes them feel more marginalized, well, we've got to, we got to figure that part out, but but the marginalization that that I know. And it's it's students, there there are, there is such, it just feels like there's such a a war going on against. Certain students, it's 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 the job of a public school we're at. Um, to try to make all students feel safe, make all students feel like they belong and give all students the same attention and opportunity to pursue what it is that they want to pursue in life. This is focused on, on that. And I, I, I understand that, but it, it speaks to, I think, this much bigger issue that we're, we're working on, but it's, it's big.
So as we discuss, I think it would be too simplistic to say metal detector, when I come into school, I'm going to show signs of distress because of the metal detector. It is so incredibly more complicated than that, than that it isn't, that, that may be the case. But I think it goes even deeper than that and harder to measure and harder to see where if I, like, it's more of the, the trickle effect that, that could happen, which makes the success criteria that much more difficult to be able to, um, to nail down. Um, because if it is, uh, it, it, we won't be able to see it in that small scale. And I think that's what concerns me as well is while it might not be the one to one weapons detection system, I went through it, now my day's ruined. It won't be that, but it might be that I was already having a rough day, something like death where we start to see it, I imagine. And that's where it'll be a lot more difficult to be able to ascertain both its, its effectiveness and what, um, and what happened. So.
It'll be the buildup sometimes.
Yes.
Right. I mean, that we are changing school culture.
It's, it's an important, very large decision. It is. And I'll reiterate, just refer by ref, you know, incorporate by reference what I said earlier. And do we have any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, Ramina, can we please have a roll call on the motion to approve a weapons detection system in an amount not to exceed eighty thousand dollars?
Mr. Shapiro.
I need a minute here. I'll be honest with you all. This decision is harder than the decisions we've made during COVID. And I'm going to vote yes.
Mr. Brazza.
Name.
Dr. Elliot Shimer. Ms. Newman.
We get, we can say something when we vote, I believe.
Yes, we can.
No, my, my stance is not yet. Not no, uh, as it's probably clear, um, what's informing my decisions are the, the experts who've said that you put this type of system in when there is community violence. And April fourth was not an example of, uh, community violence, which is proven by the local experts as well as the polling of the students and the staff who both all believed it was an isolated incident. You know, we have always done what the experts have told us to do. We opened school in August based upon the FBI and DOJ. We now have a department, director of security, which was to bring in their expertise, which was again recommended by the Michigan Task Force. All of the other items that we agreed on in the last vote all tie to what we know protects our students, which is that climate and that culture. And that's that adult that you have in the building that you can talk to. Um, so I really want to let our director of security have the chance to do their job. Uh, have them be able to talk to students and to the staff and the SRO and mental health professionals. Diversity and inclusion professionals to seek input so that the plan could get evolved and could be implemented successfully.
Mr. Neder.
Hi.
Mr. Struck.
This is, I mean, it's a difficult vote. I, I've, I, I have spent I think this summer hours and hours to talking to Dr. Law and other board members about this. And I, I've, I hear, I mean, really, I hear the sense of responsibility. The commitment to students. The sincerity, the intensity, intensity and the passion that Dr. Law have expressed on, has expressed on this issue. I I'm, I'm not in a place where I feel comfortable voting yes, but I am not going to block. I'm not going to vote to block what I think is a very, very sincere and, and responsible position taken by Dr. Law. So I am going to, I, but I'm, and I know that it's something that it's a bare majority of the board approves it and the community feels that it's important. And I trust Dr. Law and I trust our staff, but I'm going to abstain. So the motion carries three, two, one. I will move on to agenda action item. I guess it's B. Uh, approve employment contractor for director of security. It is recommended the Board of Education approve an employment contract for Amy Oliva as the district one thirteen director of security as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Excited to meet her, excited to have her come on board.
Wonderful resume.
Yes.
We, not as fast as we wanted. But we were really wanting to make sure we got the right person and we are very confident that we did that.
Do we have any further discussion? And Ramina, can we please have a roll call?
Mr. Brazza.
Hi.
Dr. Elliot Shimer.
Hi.
Ms. Newman.
Hi.
Mr. Neder.
Hi.
Ms. Shapiro. Yes, please, Mr. Struck.
Hi. The motion carries. Just one observation that I think we've spent, that's, I hope everybody appreciates how seriously we've taken this. And it's difficult decisions, but we've taken our, we've made our vote, we've had our votes and it's time to work together and move on and move to the next action item, action item C, college and career readiness. It is recommended that the Board of Education direct the administration in collaboration with teachers, staff and the community. Develop and implement a college and career readiness plan that will one, define academic readiness for district one thirteen graduates incorporating guide, guidance from the ISBE, ISBE local colleges and other sources. Two, ensure students graduate with the academic readiness needed for post-secondary success. Three, provide appropriate career education experiences for all students. And four, comply fully with Public Act one oh two dash oh zero nine one seven and related laws and guidance. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? I think we discussed this with Dr. Locke at a previous meeting and I believe we all expressed the desire that this is a great idea. So can we have a roll call?
Dr. Elliot Shimer.
Hi.
Ms. Newman.
Hi.
Mr. Neder.
Hi.
Ms. Shapiro. Yes, please. Mr. Brazza.
Hi.
Mr. Struck.
Hi. Motion carries. Uh, action item D, scholarship funds transfer between township high school district one thirteen and the Rotary Club of Island Park Highwood. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the scholarship funds transfer agreements as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? We previously discussed this with Ali. And this will further the purpose of the scholarship as originally intended. Can we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Newman.
Hi.
Mr. Neder.
Hi.
Ms. Shapiro. Yes, please. Mr. Brazza.
Hi.
Dr. Elliot Shimer.
Hi.
Mr. Struck.
Hi. The motion carries. Uh, agenda, action item E, review of closed session minutes. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve those closed session minutes that are to remain closed or open from December thirteenth, twenty twenty two through May thirtieth, twenty twenty three as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? I think we should probably mention that Anne and I have reviewed the minutes. They all contained information that's subject to that pursuant to OMA remains confidential. Is, is confidential, is, is not subject to being opened. Is there any other discussion? Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Neder.
Staying.
Ms. Shapiro. Yes, please. Mr. Brazza.
Hi.
Dr. Elliot Shimer.
Hi.
Ms. Newman.
Hi.
Mr. Struck.
Hi. The motion carries. We now move on to the consent agenda. A board member may pull any item for separate consideration. Does any board member wish to pull an item of the, of the consent agenda for separate consideration?
Um, question, if we pull an item, do each, does each one require a separate vote that is pulled? Only because B, C, and D, I was not here and it'd be easier if I just abstained from the entire vote and.
Just, you can just abstain. Procedurally, you can simply abstain. Yeah. Yeah. It is, is recommended that the consent agenda be approved as listed. Approval of consent agenda items, Board of Education regular action meeting minutes, July eleventh, twenty twenty three. Board of Education regular action meeting closed session minutes, July of, July eleventh, twenty twenty three. Uh, Board of Education regular action meeting closed session minutes through July eleventh, twenty twenty three. And the personnel notice, is there a motion? Is there a second? Is there, is there any discussion? And hearing no discussion, can we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Shapiro. Mr. Brazza.
Abstain.
Dr. Elliot Shimer. Ms. Newman.
Abstain.
Mr. Neder.
Uh, I, I was here.
Yes.
Mr. Struck.
Hi. The motion carries. Uh, we have now reached the end of our agenda. Uh, so we are ready to close. It is now ten PM. Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? I.
Hi.
Opposed, abstentions, the motion carries.